Good evening, everybody. If you could take your seat, we're going to call this meeting to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. The proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented on KCLV cable channel two. Please note, customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications can view the programming in high-definition on channel 1002. You can also watch the meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, and On-the-Go Vegas app. The Planning Commission meeting, as well as all other KL, KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclvtv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcasted on KCLV and the web, the Saturday of the meeting, at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Chair Cherry is excused. Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn is excused. Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Roush.
Here.
And Commissioner Williams is also excused. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed on the agenda concerning our actions and appeals and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains the rules of conduct. We appreciate adhering to these rules, so we can have a smooth meeting. Sorry. This is the item number four is a public comment during this portion of the agenda. It must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time for a single speaker, will be limited. Does anybody wish to bring a specific action item up? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. We'll move on to number item five. For possible action, approve the final minutes of the Planning Commission meeting. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the commission meeting for March 26, 2019.
You've all heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Item number six, we'll move on to the housekeeping. Any, is there any items that the commissioner, the staff, or applicant, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Staff, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have some housekeeping items. The applicants are requesting to withdraw without prejudice, items 10 through 12 and 19. The applicants are requesting to obey items 26 through 29 and 35 to 44 to the May 28, 2019 Planning Commission. The applicant is requesting to obey items 24 and 25 to the June 25, 2019 Planning Commission. Thank you.
Go ahead, state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioner. Tony Celeste, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive here on behalf of the applicant for items eight and nine. We would request that those items be obeyed to your June 25 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Toussaint, would you care to make a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve items 10 through 12, 19, eight and nine to the June 25 meeting, 24 and 25 to the June 25 meeting, 26 and 27 to the May 28 meeting, 28 and 29, May 28 meeting, 35 through 39, May 28 meeting, and 40 through 44 to the May 28 meeting. A motion to approve.
Can you make that correction, please?
Okay. And motion to obey, was it eight and nine?
Yes, to June 25.
To June 25.
Okay, you've all heard the motion. Please cast your vote.
I'm sorry, did she state they were going to be withdrawn, items?
Abey.
Oh, they're being obeyed? But 10 through 12 and 19?
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Just again, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, if Vice Chair, if you could just restate the motion, please.
Okay. Items 10 through 12, withdrawn without prejudice. 19, withdrawn without prejudice. Eight and nine will be obeyed until June 25. 24 and 25, obeyed till June 25. 26 and 27, May 28. May 28 and 29, I mean, items number 28 and 29, May 28. Items number 35 through 39, applicant requests to obey till May 28. And 40 through 44, applicant requests abeyance till May 28.
Okay, you've all heard the motion. Please cast your vote. Okay, and that passes. Mr. Summerfield?
Mr. Chair, so, just as a reminder for this evening, because we do have a quorum at four members, but we do not have a supermajority this evening, so any general plan amendment items that are on the agenda this evening, while full discussion and a vote can be had, none of them can reach supermajority, so they will move forward to City Council without, staff can correct me, but I believe it's without a recommendation or ten amount to a denial, because we do not have that supermajority, so that we don't have to announce that each time. I just am announcing that for the whole meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Summerfield. Okay, moving on to one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion and one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing will be opened at one time. Any person representing an applicant, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission, not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the applicant recommended by the staff, should request to have the item removed from this part of the agenda. The items are as follows. Item number seven, TMP 75951, applicant La Croce Engineering, owner of 2800 Fremont LLC for a possible action for a request of a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision at 2800 Fremont Street. Staff recommends approval. Item number 13, VVR 75925, applicant Omen Carmel Canyon HOA for a possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no landscaping along the portions of La Coucha Road and Leon Avenue where such is required for an existing residential subdivision adjacent to the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Jones Boulevard. Staff recommends approval. Under 14, VAR 75872, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner State of Nevada, for a possible action on a request for a variance to allow an existing 63-foot-tall off-premise sign to be increased to 83 feet in height at 1604 West Oki Boulevard. Staff recommends approval. And item number 15, SUP 75967, applicant owner Southern Nevada Occupational Health Clinic, owner ANIC PC ETL, for a possible action on a request for a special use for an alternative parking standard to allow 15 parking spaces where 22 parking spaces are required for a proposed 4,928-square-foot clinic use at 1640 East Sahara Avenue. Staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion? Let me ask, does anybody wish to have any of those items heard? Okay, please state your name for the record.
Stacy Henry, 8820 Monte Odo Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89131. And this is regarding item 13.
Go ahead.
He doesn't need to.
Unless you're opposing something.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not opposing. In the direction to be up here present, so.
Okay, anybody else wish to be heard on any agenda item just read? Okay, seeing none. Vice Chair?
Motion to approve items seven, 13, 14, and 15.
You've all heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that passes.
Mr. Chairman, item seven is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within seven days. Items 13 through 15 are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within the next 10 days.
All right, thank you, Mr. Summerfield. Okay, next is the public hearing items. We have related 16 through 19. 16, abeyance, re-notifications, VAR 75123, applicant owner DZ and Rainbow LLC ETL for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 25-foot residential adjacent setback where 79 feet is required at the northeast corner of Van Road and Rainbow. Staff recommends denial. Item number 17, abeyance, re-notification, SUP 75124 for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 2985-square-foot beer-and-wine cooler off-sale establishment. Staff recommends denial. And abeyance, re-notification, SDR 75125 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 19,785-square-foot commercial center, including a 2,985-square-foot convenience store with fuel pumps and a canopy, and two 8,400-square-foot commercial buildings with a waiver to not orient the buildings to the corner of the street front where such is required to allow portions of the landscape buffer adjacent to the west property line to be three feet, and a portion of the south property line to be five feet where 15 feet is required for the bulk, and to allow portions of the landscape buffer adjacent to the east property line to be five feet where eight feet is required. Staff recommends denial. Can I have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, a waiver is requested to allow a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer adjacent to the east property line. Staff supports this request as it is due to an existing access easement for an active well. However, the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances to support the remaining variance, waivers, or exception. Staff therefore recommends denial of all three applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Liz Delk, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive here on behalf of the applicant. If I can direct your attention to the overhead. This property is comprised of four parcels on the corner of Rainbow and Anne. It was previously approved for a drive-through on the southern parcel and four retail buildings on the northern three parcels. The property is Zoned C1. The application before you this evening is a site development review for two retail buildings on the northern portion of the property and a convenience store and gas pumps on the southern portion of the property. We are also requesting a special use permit for the sale of beer and wine from the convenience store. So on the site plan, as you can see, we have two retail buildings on the eastern portion of our property, and the C store is also located on the eastern part with the pumps to the west. We've made several changes from our original application after meeting with the neighbors and based on their preference to the site layout. First, we've moved the buildings from their original location along Rainbow to the east side of the property to add an additional buffer for them. We've also added an intense landscape buffer on that eastern side. We were originally not putting any landscaping there. Staff was recommending approval of that because of the well easement. However, we are going to add that regardless. We've also added an eight-foot wall along the northern and the eastern part of the property per the request of the neighbors for some additional buffering for them. All of our buildings will be one-story, maximum feet of 26.4 feet, and we do meet all of our distance separation requirements for the special use permit for the beer and wine. There have been a couple additional requests from the neighbors that I'd like to direct to the board. We are more than happy to comply with each of them, but again, I'd just like to throw them out to you and allow you to move forward or not. First one is the request to add an additional four-foot of wrought iron along the walls along the well. Again, I think that the code for the wall height is eight feet, but if the board is inclined to allow us to do that, we're more than happy to do so. We're also, the neighbors are also requesting that all of the lights be shielded and pointed away from the neighbors, which we're okay with as well. And the last request from the neighbors was to work with them to relocate the electrical for the well. Not sure if that's something that can be a condition, but again, we're more than happy to work with the neighbors on that. We understand this is a difficult piece, and we really appreciate the neighbors working with us and giving additional feedback on the property, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is notice as a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on these items? Please come forward, state your name for the record, three minutes.
Jim Epley, 5686 North Rainbow Boulevard. I'm one of the applicants in this project as well. I have a letter here, I don't know if this is shown on the screen, but this letter is from the school, there's a Kinder Prep Academy school directly across the street from the proposed retail locations. And I'll just read it to you as well. It says, "They weren't able to come tonight. Scott and Jennifer Schrods, the owners of the school." It says, "This letter is to serve as notice that we are in favor of the development on North Rainbow and Anne Road. We are in favor of the proposed convenience store on the corner of North Rainbow and Anne Road selling beer and alcohol. We are also in favor of the proposed strip mall that would be to the north of the convenience store on North Rainbow. Over the last few months, we have seen more police presence in our area due to the homes across from our school. Just last week, we had police presence at one of the homes that is proposed as part of the strip mall. This overabundance of police, SWAT, and K-9 was an upsetting situation for our families and staff here at Kinder Prep Academy. It is our hope that the council will approve the 7-Eleven and strip mall. If you need to reach us, the phone numbers are there as well, so I can present this. It didn't get submitted before today."
Give that to the staff, that'd be great. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record, three minutes.
Good evening, Council Commissioners. My name is Maria Kreischer, 5710 North Rainbow Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130, Nellis Air Force Base, McLegal. I live next to this proposed strip mall. We have the community well. According to the Nevada regulations, it has, it cannot develop anything within 1,000 feet. NRS, NRS 445A 415. Due to the fact that this is a community well, it is a proposed interference with the livelihood of an aquifer. We'd like this to be in denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have three mics, so if you do want to speak on this item, we've got a lengthy agenda, please sit in the front row. We can get this on. Thank you, state your name for the record.
Keith Pearson, 5710 North Rainbow, Las Vegas, 89130.
Name again for me, please? I didn't hear it.
Keith Pearson, also live just to the north of the proposed development. I had not seen the change to, to the location of the convenience stores. Last we saw, they were supposed to be along the eastern border. Well, we've been in correspondence with email with the developers, but I've not seen anything on this. That really, you know, I was far more comfortable with the development with the stores back against the alleyway and the parking lot out towards Rainbow Boulevard. The way it is right now, that just seems to me it's going to invite more complications and problems with the alleyway. It is, it also puts more cars right in line with the well and with the fencing around that. I had not seen any of that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Have you step up and answer the questions, please?
Would you like me to clarify?
Please.
So as you can see on the overhead here, so all of the buildings are on the east side. This was the, what was discussed at our neighborhood meeting. Here's Rainbow, and here's Anne. The homes here are to the east. So all, this is the C store and the two retail buildings, so they are pushed up against the eastern property line. As far as the well, we will be required to comply with all of the Nevada Health District regulations for that. Otherwise, we don't have anything else.
Does that conclude?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point in time, I'll open it up to the commission for anything. Commissioner Roush?
Thank you, Chairman. Through you, I'd like to ask staff their position about the community well and understand that a little bit better and how that would be supervised or regulated when the plans come in, and if we can get some sort of clarification on the statute that was cited previously and whether or not this is something that should be of concern to us, or whether you're reviewing that. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I actually don't have any early information to share with regard to Health District regulations. It's not something that Public Works really gets involved with. Maybe the Building Department would, but I, I don't know the health regulations for
Commissioner, Commissioner Roush, you done?
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Yeah, I was thinking about that myself, and I'm not sure if the well is anything that this commission has any kind of ability to regulate due to the fact that it's not on this property, which is my understanding, so in Public Works or whoever could correct me if I was, if I'm incorrect in that statement, nothing about the fence. There's no variance that was on the agenda, so this body doesn't have the ability to approve putting another four-foot fence or wrought iron on top of the existing eight-foot-tall fence. And then, there is a third comment that was made in regards to shielding of the lights, and absolutely, I agree with shielding of the lights. That should happen on every project. And I did ask the director earlier about this, and within the conditions and the backup information, we do have a Title 19 catch-all statement that says that anything within Title 19, you have to meet all conditions of Title 19, and shielding against the residential neighborhood would be one of those conditions, so they would, we would be requiring them to shield those, so I appreciate the person bringing that up, but those are my comments on those three topics.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Just to clarify, one of the things that was asked, so, looking at the Clark County Assessors, the well appears to be on the third parcel north of Anne. So, I mean, the assessors isn't a perfect legal description of where the well sits, but it appears to be on the third parcel north of Anne. And, you know, we would need a survey to determine where things land on the property, but it appears to me the well is actually on that one parcel.
Just to follow up, so prior to permitting, that would have to be, all that would have to be out.
Mr. Chair, I think the applicant indicated something about the Health District having to require certain, they'd have to comply with certain requirements in the Health District in order to make sure that that well isn't compromised, so.
Okay, that's, that's kind of where I was going with that. Okay, Commissioner Toussaint?
Yeah, I like the idea that you're putting up an eight-foot wall. I don't like the idea of iron on top of that. I know if I was a 14-year-old boy, one thing I would want would be iron hooks so I could launch myself over. So I'm in favor of this project. I think you've done everything you can, and you'll have my support tonight.
Any other comments? If not, I'll chime in.
So, this one has been worked and worked for some time, many homeowners' meetings. We went back and forth, different drawings, moved things around. This is basically exactly what the consensus of the last neighborhood meeting's request was, is to flip it and move the buildings closer to the property line, so that way it's more of a buffer, and it shades the existing properties that are there. They requested a gate around the east side of the well. You guys said, "Okay." The shielded lighting. The only thing that I have a rub with, as well as Commissioner Toussaint, is the wrought iron above an eight-foot wall. It's just going to turn it now looking into a prison, and I don't think it'd be aesthetically pleasing in any way, shape, or form, or a deterrent in any way, shape, or form. Somebody wants over something, they're going to get over it. So I don't think it should look like a prison, because that's exactly what it would look like. Plus, anything above eight foot would then be considered, would need another waiver or variance. So, yeah, I'm not in favor of that. I definitely support the project. A lot of work went into it. I commend you for having all the neighborhood meetings. I attended them, I was there, I listened, I sat back, and people gave their input, and you guys listened. So if there's no other comment, I would like to make a motion for approval on this agenda item. Agenda item number 16, VAR 75123, motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, with regard to the additional conditions, are those already part of the conditions, or?
Okay, so it would be, the condition would be the eight-foot wall?
Mr. Chair, I'll be for item 18 for the SDR will.
Okay. I'll bring up all those under 18. Okay, so, motion for approval, item number 16, VAR 75123. Please cast your votes. And that motion passes. Motion for approval on item number 17, SUP 75124. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, on item 18, just as you're getting ready for item 18, we'd like to delete
Commissioner Roush?
And that motion passes. Under 18, motion to approve, SDR 75125, with deleting number 14 and adding the gate on the east side of the well, and the shielded lighting, and the eight-foot block wall on the east property line. Motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, before that's done, I need my staff to actually verify what the conditions are there, so that we can have that articulated. As council, as Commissioner Schlotman mentioned, the shielding lighting is already a requirement. It doesn't need to be a new condition. It's a requirement of our code for residential lighting. For the block wall, you can make that a condition at, requiring it to be at the maximum height. And then, I apologize, what was the third condition?
Gate on the well.
The gate on the well.
Access gate.
Okay, so yes, that you can also make as a condition, and they'll reword that so that we get that right.
So just to clarify, we do not want a special condition for the lighting. I have one ready to go if we need one, but, no, okay. All right, so we'll have added condition, a gate will be installed along the property line on the east side of the well. And a second added condition, an eight-foot block wall will be installed along the east and north property lines?
And deletion of, I don't know.
And deletion of condition 14.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Next agenda item, related 20 through 23, abeyance, VAR 75755, applicant Two Stone Living, Inc., owner Touchstone Alexander LLC, for a possible action, requesting a variance to allow a stub street where a cul-de-sac is required, and allow a 25-foot private street where a sidewalk, such is required. Staff recommends approval. Item number 21, abeyance, VAR 75756, for possible action, a request for a variance to allow 179 parking spaces where 282 parking spaces are required. Staff recommends denial. Abeyance, number 22, SDR 75639, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 130-unit, single-family attached residential development. Staff recommends denial. And number 23, TMP 75640, for a possible action, a request for a tentative map for a proposed 130-unit, single-family attached residential subdivision. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development meets density and height requirements for the applicable lone mountain master. the applicable Lone Mountain Master Plan Design Standards. However, the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the parking and street standard variances. Staff therefore recommends denial of all applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Okay, this notice, go for it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wes Petty. My address is 1555 South Rainbow. I'm here on behalf of, behalf of the applicant, Touchstone Living. Our application has changed slightly since we originally submitted after meeting with the neighbors. We're actually proposing 124, single-family attached townhomes now. So tonight before you, we have our tenant amount for 124 units, an SDR for 124 units, and then two variances. One variance is for stub streets, which is pretty typical with, with this type of development. And then also the removal of the sidewalk within the community. And we have walking trails between the buildings and in common spaces and they're all pretty close proximity to the pool area. And then the last variance was for parking. So based on city code, we're required to provide 269 spaces. The new site plan that we have has 269 spaces, but the allocation is slightly different than the way, than the code. The code wants two unimpeded spaces per unit. We're providing three different garage types. We have a single car, a double car tandem, and a double, a two-car traditional where they're side by side. And then we're also providing on-street parking, which is parking on the edge of the street and then stalls. So we are actually providing 269 spaces, which is what's required. We just had the variance to address the allocation in the code. So if there's any questions, I can answer them.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, the project that's being described unfortunately isn't reflective of the backup. If I could ask the applicant, when did you submit these revised drawings to staff for review?
I'm gonna say the end of February.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that your presentation, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is noticed as a public hearing. Does anybody on these items wish to be heard? Please step forward, state your name for the record. We have three minutes.
Robin Vitello, 2251 North Rampart, number 230. I am wholly opposed to this project for all items 21 through 23. I have several complaints. First of all, my first complaint about this project is that it's just not aesthetically congruent with the area, the sports park, the softball fields, the play park. I don't personally feel that we should have condo complexes on public park area where people congregate for playing and enjoying sports and being outdoors. Visitors to the park, I believe, will be inconvenienced when accessing the sports park, even with the adjusted plans that were presented this evening. As it is now, pedestrian traffic can access the park through the parcel that the proposal's coming through. If this project goes forward, pedestrian traffic, bike traffic will have to go all the way to the northern end of the park or the southern end of the park. I also don't like the idea of building a three-story structure that's gonna block the view of the city. An additional complaint that I have relates to the variance 75755. I don't like the idea of a stub street. I think it'll be confusing for folks that are trying to use the public park. They're going to pull into a street that they think leads them into the park and it's gonna be misleading. They're actually gonna enter into a private condo complex. The public may think they're turning into the park, but they're turning into a private property. Variants 75756, I'm also wholly opposed to. I still disagree that there will be enough parking spaces for this. And this is actually my, my largest complaint about this project. The overflow parking for this project, despite the fact that the proposal's coming through that there are garages, I find it very hard to believe that they can provide enough parking spaces. And the owner of the property may think that they can use overflow parking in the public park area. And if you've ever been to this park, when it's softball competition season, when there's sports going on, there's no parking there at all when there's sports going on. We have a lot of visitors that come to that park from California, Arizona. They come in from all the surrounding states for all these softball competitions. There's no parking in that sports park, that public park. And if the condo complex gets full and there's too many cars, the overflow parking is gonna end up in a public park or it's gonna end up on Walupi. And that's where I have another huge problem, is the safety. A lot, if you're in that area, Walupi, especially northbound Walupi, a lot of pedestrians walk through that area. They walk their pets through that area. There's also a lot of cyclists. And if the commissioner and the other commissioners are familiar, Metro Police Department has their training academy in that area. They run up and down Walupi. And if there's cars overflow parking that ends up on Walupi, that's going to be a safety hazard, because people are gonna have to go around those cars in order to go north on Walupi. It's a dangerous situation. There will never be enough parking there in the park and I don't think that a private property should have overflow parking in a public park. Finally, just one more comment if I may, sir.
Time's up, time's up.
Okay, thank you.
I gotta keep it going. I got a real lengthy agenda here.
I understand.
Has anybody else wished to be heard on these items?
Thank you.
Please come forward. Alright, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open it up for the planning commission, commissioners. Commissioner Roush?
You know, I'm really torn on this one because the, the site is so difficult. It's very difficult to figure out what to put on a property of this shape and size. The location of it is very difficult next to the ballfields. There's been some very valid comments made tonight and I have been by there when there are tournaments and other events and when it's crowded. The situation is that from my point of view, I feel like it's, it's a very intense use for something next to a ballfield, next to family uses, next to children. I'm worried about the traffic and I'm concerned about the intensity of the number of units on the site, but I haven't made up my mind yet what I wanna do on this. I'd like to see if my fellow commissioners have any comments first. And it's not really my area. I'd like to defer to the commissioner from this ward.
Commissioner Schlotman? Okay, I just have a question for the applicant. When you say that you, you're asking you had 179 where 282 is required, are you considering the garages as making it up to get that 282 and meet that standard?
Yes and no. So with the 124, it's actually 269 now. And so the code's unimpeded, so we have two-car tandems, but we're only allowed on the two-car tandem to use one of those spaces towards the 269. So if we were able to use the, both cars in the tandem, we'd be at like 312. So we're using the garages as one. For the single and the two-car tandem, we're counting one. And then for the two-car wide, traditional-type parking, we're allowing two. And then we're sprinkled throughout, we have a bunch of stalled parking spaces and on-street parking spaces to meet the 269 required.
Follow-up, but they're saying that you have to have 282.
That was when we had 130 units. After a meeting with the neighbors at a, at a neighborhood meeting, we, we changed the site plan considerably, added a bunch more parking, changed the architecture so we could have the two-car traditional-type, type garage, and widened the streets to allow the on-street parking.
So I guess I'm lost, because it says here that you are asking for 130 units.
Yeah, we resubmitted new applications after that neighborhood meeting back in.
So how many units now?
124.
I guess I have a question for staff then. How come, does it match?
So, Mr. Chairman, so yes, that's exactly it. That's, I apologize, I was scrambling around. The drawings that he has do not reflect the drawings that we have as of April 2nd, 2019. So I, this plan that he's presented on the overhead is not what staff has evaluated. Therefore, I'm gonna need to ask that we obey this to allow staff to look at these revised plans. I, I'm not suggesting that they haven't been submitted. I'm just suggesting that we haven't seen those and that's not what we evaluated our, the staff report on, and so.
I see the drawing she has. Is that, is there, I think it's the same drawing, it's just different colors. I identified it by building type.
I'm just gonna.
We're sorry, we have to break the meeting for just a second.
Gonna pause it for a second?
We lost Quorum.
Okay, well, he's doing that. I need to pull him off, because I don't think we have his drawings.
He's doing that, I need to pull him off because I don't think we have his drawings.
The other one just goes two weeks also.
We haven't held it in. We can hold it, so there's a few of my map here because of cars. So they're gonna, they're gonna hold it. But yeah, if we hold it two weeks, then everything else. And that's gonna help with that drainage study.
Well, because we have more than 179 spaces on this. With the gas market, it's already there, so I think the numbers are wrong.
So we have, we have thirty for two or sixty.
That's one fifty-four.
Yeah.
But then we provide all these spaces. And I don't think they're, they're only giving us credit for twenty-five, oh my god. It's this.
Though that's all included with this one, so the street market is eighty-three plus twenty-three.
We should get credit for the stall, we're not, they're saying we have one seventy-nine. Now, number one seventy-nine.
That's wrong. They never updated the staff right now, and that's what they're talking about. So they're gonna go ahead and vote this lands, it's making a lot of their back up material into this.
It looks like it's gonna go wrong, and they're gonna turn it down.
Just got it for two weeks, okay? And email, just let me know.
Okay.
I don't wanna get turned down, this is getting hard to win. Commish yourself, commish yourself forward.
I know she has, but wow, she's done. You can tell already, she, she does not want this.
Okay.
Because she doesn't understand it, and obviously didn't read, read the package, they're going, you're wanting your. Something like that.
And they're denouncing it.
They're walking, they're going, see denial, see one seventy-nine. They're not seeing really, uh, look at your numbers. See, very easy part of it, you've got one fifty-four plus eighty-three. Which we can get to count no matter what, so it's what, two, two thirty-seven.
And we have on street, thirty-two, thirty-two sixty-nine. So we're lucky, do we need it? So the two, the two, the two hours, the ninety-four other units are the ones, the other seat.
I know, I know, one fifty-four is correct.
Yeah. So this, it's on that, it's on three. And then, uh, the, we have the street board, we have the two sixty, and then we have another hundred.
Or, we have ninety-four tandem spaces around here. Because we have thirty building and two cars.
We're already, so we're already counting for one of them here.
I know, so that's what, I mean, this should.
Looking to some of our signals, like, this unit here is a single star.
No, they don't, everyone has two spaces.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. So we don't get to count.
We don't get to count.
So we're sitting at.
I need, see, I need new architecture because, because when the package was submitted, how the single car. Okay, that's what we had. The two, the tandem and the single stuff. Kind of building, so I just need to use that.
Well, we still have it.
So we have that.
Well, so you're saying we're getting, we're not getting credit for this.
We're getting one and one and two.
Yeah.
So.
All right, we will call this meeting back to order again. The applicant, please come up to the microphone. Sir, Commissioner Toussaint.
Do you want me to address any of the questions or concerns?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
My understanding is, is this community gated?
It will be gated, yes.
It will be gated, so people driving in there by accident won't happen because they're gonna have to get through a gate to get in there, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, they'll be forced to turn around.
Right, and I also understand that you have, with your original plan, you had more units than you have now, but you added, you took away some units so you could increase the parking, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, so we, we dropped six units.
Uh-huh.
And we increased the parking from, I think it was one seventy-nine to two sixty-nine, so almost a hundred spaces. And like I was saying, we don't get a count for this second tandem space, so that would be an additional forty-two spaces up and above that number that we're not including.
Right, and as far as the interior goes, you're gonna, my understanding is you're gonna have a, a doggy pet lot or a pet lot, and you're gonna have a tot lot, is that correct, for the homeowners that live in, in this gated community?
Yeah, that, that's over here, the, this area right here is a pool. This is a big grass area, I think they were talking about maybe putting a doggy area over here.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's some walking trails through here, behind the units.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we submitted a drainage study already to Public Works, and one of the conditions that they, they've requested is connectivity to the park through the community for the residents as part of the amenity to the community.
Yeah, th- this is a really odd shaped lot, and anytime you have infill, it, it's, it's an issue. I'm on Hualapai all the time because I have relatives that live not too far from there, they're not in the notification area, but they're, they're, I'm close enough where I'm on Hualapai a lot. And I, I, I look at everything as though I'm walking out my front door and I'm gonna have to look at this project because that's the only way I can evaluate anything. And I think this is a really nice project, I, I think you have met, I know you've met with the neighbors, I know you had meetings, and I know that there are some people that aren't gonna be in favor of this, and, and, and that's okay. You know, you can't, you can't please everybody. But with this odd shape of an area, I, I think you've actually made the best use of what you could. And like you said, you're gonna have on-street parking now where you didn't have before, is that correct?
Correct, we widened the streets to address that.
And that was my first issue really, is when I first saw this project, when I talked to, to Mr. Manning, I went, it's Thanksgiving, I have a big family, where, where are these people gonna park? And I don't want them parking in, in the park, and I don't want them parking in the common, you know, the other areas. And he said, you know, we're gonna work on this, and, and you did, you went above and beyond and changed the project to, I believe, something that's harmonious and compatible with this area. I'd like to hear from my other commissioners if they have anything else to say.
Commissioner Olsch.
Thank you, Chairman, through you. I just had one question on clarification of the access points. I see that there are double gated entries coming in. Are the exits that are on Hualapai, one's on the west end, I believe, one on the east, and then there's one by the ballpark driveway, are those exit-only crash gates, or are those also electronic-operated gates, or how does that work, please?
Right now, this is the, the main entrance and exit.
Yep.
Right here, lined up across the street, so this one right now is just a emergency access point.
So accidental trips would not be possible into that gate, it would, it would be a, a gate that's closed except for fire access?
Correct.
What about the other access points, or are there any access points?
There's no other access points, these are just stub streets that service the, those end units.
Confirming that, thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, Commissioner Toussaint.
Yes, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve VAR seven five seven five five.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes, Commissioner?
Yes, on VAR seven five seven five six, Mr. Summerfield, can you give me an update as to what the parking situation is?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair, I'm gonna have staff read those updated numbers so that we, we have what the variance that you would be approving is.
Through you, Chair. The variance based on how we count parking for Title Nineteen would be two hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces where two hundred and sixty-nine are required.
Are there any other conditions that we should be aware of on this particular item? If, if, if there are none, I'd like to make a motion to approve VAR seven five seven five six, with conditions.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes, Commissioner?
On SDR seven five six three nine, motion to approve.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And on TMP seven five six four oh, zero, rather, a motion to approve.
You've heard the motion, please cast. And that motion passes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Moving on to items thirty-three, thirty-four, GPA seven five nine five eight, applicant D.R. Horton, owner Frank D. Jane Pernacci. For a proposed action on a request for a general plan amendment from rural density. And RNP, rural neighborhood preservation to low-density residential. On the north side of Regina Avenue, east of TP Lane, Ward Six, staff recommends approval. ZON seven five nine five nine for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residential to R One Single Family Residential, staff recommends approval. Number thirty-two, VAR seven five nine six zero for possible action on a request for a variance to allow one percent connectivity ratio where one point three zero is the minimum required. And a private street without access gate not to be constructed to a public street standards, staff recommends denial. Item number thirty-three, VAC seven five nine six one for possible action on a request for petition to vacate U.S. government patent easement generally located on north of Regina area, east of TP Lane, staff recommends denial. And item number thirty-four, TMP seven five nine six two for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed sixteen-lot, single-family residential subdivision with a waiver to allow sixty-foot intersection offset where two hundred and twenty foot is required. And to defer offset improvements, including streetlights, for Regina Avenue where off-site improvements are required at the time of development, staff recommends denial. Can I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rezoning would allow six thousand five hundred square foot lots while the proposed general plan amendment would limit the density to five point four nine units per acre. Although the applicant is currently proposing lot sizes greater than ten thousand feet, square feet, which is consistent with the interlocal agreement, the proposed rezoning would allow a lot, would allow lot sizes less than ten thousand feet, which is not allowed by the interlocal agreement. Therefore, staff supports the general plan amendment but has revised its recommendation and does not support the rezoning request. Staff has no objection to the vacation request. The applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances to support the waiver of variances. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment and vacation request, but denial of the rezoning variance and tentative map. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication, thank you.
Thank you, please state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, my name is Tony Sless, address nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton Homes. If I could just direct your attention to the overhead. Our property is located right here where it says sites, just shy of four and a half acres. We are just east of Fort Apache, to the north is Centennial, to the south is Regina. Along our eastern boundary would be the Chieftain Alignment, and right here is TP. You can see by this aerial that just to the north would be the two fifteen. Right here on the corner of Centennial and Fort Apache is an assisted living facility. And then with respect to the zoning, you can see right here that the site is adjacent to a property already zoned R One, which is our request tonight. First, when we started this process, we actually submitted a eighteen-lot subdivision map, we had a neighborhood meeting. Based on that neighborhood meeting, they wanted to see some reduction in that, so we did reduce it to sixteen lots, which is now in your backup. As a result of that, we do no, no longer need to go to the GPA request of low, we can actually request that to go down to R. The R general plan would cap density at three point five nine units to the acre, we are at about three point five, so we are within that R designation. As you can see, we're also requesting R One zoning, R One is just to the east of us. In this location right here, we are adjacent to that, so we do think R One is a compatible zoning. But most importantly, I think, is the tentative map. The tentative map, you can see right here, located here, is sixteen lots, as I mentioned. We have twelve lots that are accessed off of Centennial via this driveway right here, and then we have four lots that are fronting onto Regina. Most importantly, what this map shows is that all of these lots are a minimum of ten thousand square feet. That would comply with the interlocal agreement, and actually, these lots would, based on that ten thousand square foot minimum, would actually be larger than many of the lots that are in the R One, adjacent to the east. This is the approved tentative map for that, you can see the eighteen lots here. Many of these lots closer to Centennial are between seventy-five hundred and eight thousand square feet. And then immediately to the west of us, you also have lots that are closer to Centennial, that would be less than that ten thousand square foot minimum. So we believe our tentative map does show the intent that we are agreeing or complying with the interlocal agreement, which mandates the ten thousand minimum square foot lots. Also with respect to this, we have some technical issues that I, I'd like to address. The first one really, and probably the most important one, is with respect to the street offset. We are proposing our street location right in the middle of the site, as you can see from the aerial, the development directly to the north and the other side of Centennial has their location not in the middle, their, their development not in the middle, but rather to the east there. And because we cannot line up our driveways with that, that creates only a sixty-foot offset where two hundred and twenty feet is required. Staff, in their recommendation or in their reports, suggests that we could flip the design and go off Regina. And while that is, is true, we would not want to burden the RNP with any additional traffic through there, like our neighbors to the west. During the design of this, the neighborhood had requested not to have block walls, they did want some residential to front, to front Regina, so we're proposing only four of them to go to Regina. And with, then with the balance of the twelve in the cul-de-sac. But nonetheless, we do agree with and understand Public Works and staff's concern about conflicting left-hand turns that could happen here on Centennial. So as a result, we did work with Public Works, and you can see specifically, condition ten in the backup requires us to do a median through here, and that would essentially only allow right in, right out, and that would help reduce and prevent the, or mitigate the, the left-hand turns and the conflicting turning movement. So not only do we agree with all the if-approved conditions, but I specifically wanted to highlight condition ten, which requires D.R. Horton to make that improvement in Centennial and that, that median, and thereby mitigating any of those safety concerns. Two other technical things we have, one is the connectivity ratio, we're providing one where it should be the one point three. Generally, this, this body's been very supportive of those variance ratios primarily because this is a small development. If it was a, a larger development, also closer to commercial, then I could, you know, I could see the connectivity issue. And then the final one is, we have the patent easements that surround the property that we're asking to vacate. Oh, and also finally, we do have a variance request or waiver request to not have a gates on a private street. So with that, we would appreciate your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, this is notice as a public hearing, does anybody from the public wish to chime in on these items? Please come forward, state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Brian Vedder, I live on Regina Avenue nine three two five West Regina, it's directly across the street from the development. I've got some notice cards here, I couldn't really process them because the language is a little sloppy. I'd like to submit them now if I could. How would I refer to this one right here? It refers to for, defer all improvements off, off, off the site to the south, and we're gonna. And we're going to need some floodwater abatement there because all that's going to come onto Regina. I'm sorry. Also, I'm sorry. Anyway, that's the floodwater issue. Am I on the overhead? What do I see here? Okay.
Turn it around. Just turn it around one eighty. There you go.
So it looked good for me, huh? In general, we've been seeing this coming and we know that we need to get in line here, but there's a major issue that I'm hoping to illustrate for everyone here. This map, I think we've already seen versions of it this evening with the half-acre lots all the way around the area. And that's the legacy. So that's why we're also committed to that scheme. Here's a couple photos that will help. Really doesn't show up very good, does it? Show you why we love our streets so much and why we'd like to keep it that way. Hopefully, you've seen that. This is what D.R. Horton projects look like. Quite a comparison there, I think. You'd all agree. So that's why we cherish it so much. And so here we are with some site plans, some drawing I did here. You've seen this scheme already. I think everyone's familiar with it. D.R. Horton is representing four lots that face on Regina Avenue. The adjoining property that we are hoping could form as a template that could be repeated next door was a huge, huge, huge controversy arose over this. We had close to fifty people. Neighbors came to city council, expressed their desire that the RNP should not be busted. We did not get our way. But this is a map that shows what that history was. Got to turn that around, too. The RNP used to be centered on Centennial, then in two thousand fourteen, it was moved down midway. Then it was moved down to just a hundred feet or so, ninety feet, from the edge of Regina. And that's all we were able to salvage of the RNP.
All right, sir, sir. You passed your lot of time. Thank you.
Let me flip this sheet so you can see what we propose, that they should match.
Thank you, thank you. Has anybody else to be wished to hear on that? Please step forward, state your name. If anybody wants to be heard on this, sit in the front row so we can be expeditious on this, please. State your name. Thank you. Three minutes.
Richard Galecki. I live nine three zero five West Regina. I live next door to Brian, right here. Basically, what he's saying is these houses, everybody in our neighborhood is about just keeping our street looking like the rest of the street. We don't want all that traffic flowing into Regina. It was nice over here. Two houses, larger plots facing Regina. That's nice. We'll have neighbors there. That'll be great. Those two can enter on Regina. The rest can go out this way. What he was saying is here, there's four houses. It'd be nice if it were two, just so everything conforms and looks the same. You know, what I would love is if they're all half acres over here, but we lost that battle over here. So all we're doing, asking is if you guys just, you know, work with us a little bit, you know? So that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Please step forward, state your name. Three minutes.
Hi, Sharon Craig Olson, sixty-two sixty Royal Burke Court. I represent the same in terms of what we're asking for. Maintaining the standards is obviously out of the question, so we're asking at least continuity. So I think the best is just to follow what was presented by the previous gentleman. If at all possible, obviously, the ten lots are really what we're looking for to maintain continuity. We've seen a lot of encroachment of annexation in our area, and so we're trying to reduce that and again, keep the continuity. So I would agree with the gentlemen's before me to ensure that we work with the developer to come up with something that's meeting what our requirements are as well as theirs, as well as maintaining the rural environment. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Can I turn in my cards as well?
Please. Anybody else wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Mr. Celeste, please come up. And rebut.
Just, I think, one point I'd like to make first, or I guess two. One, I want to reiterate the fact that we are in the interlocal and ten thousand square foot is what is expected. And that is what we are providing unlike our adjacent property owners. Number two, talk about continuity and wanting two lots there. Directly across the street are three that are fronting Regina. We're asking for four, again, all minimum of ten thousand. So I don't, not sure there really is that continuity with respect to that because there are three just immediately to the south of us lots facing Regina. Our lots would be facing Regina as well to keep that same streetscape instead of providing, you know, a block wall along Regina in that area. So with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Roush?
This is a difficult area. It's always historically been controversial because you've got county ownership and county residents that come down to the city and want to tell us how to run the city. And then I understand and am sympathetic to the neighbors wanting to have a compatible neighborhood. I'm from Ward Two. Everything's master planned in Ward Two. I like curbs, gutters, sidewalks, streetlights. I don't understand why people don't want to have streetlights, but that's me. We all get a different vote up here. And so, you know, I think that what's proposed looks good. I think that it cleans up the area, and I think that it's a nice development. I think there's a lot of people that want to live in that type of development. That said, we can't control what's on the county side of the road. They can approve what they want to have. And I do understand the neighborhood's concern about having a lack of continuity. I think it does look bad. I'd like to see the county clean it up and put curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in. But I get into that argument all the time with Commissioner DeSalvio, and we go back to our corners and we agree to disagree. So I think that in this particular instance, I have one question for the applicant. Are these two-story homes or single-story homes?
We do not have a site plan with it, so right, they do a mixture of two and three stories. So I can't answer that directly.
Not sure what you're going to be building yet, but they will be ten thousand foot lots.
They are all minimum tens. They're all slightly bigger than that, yes.
And if you came back to me for something less than that, I would probably vote no. But since you're going to be sticking with your ten thousand foot lots, I'll be able to support you tonight. I think that's a good and compatible use for the neighborhood, so thank you.
And that is reflected in the tentative map in your backup. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner?
Yes, Chairman, through you, I just have a couple of comments. I agree with a lot of the comments that Commissioner Roush made in regards to off-site improvements. I have always been a proponent of putting in off-site improvements. And however, I do understand with the RNP and keeping it rural in these particular areas is important to a lot of the neighbors. So now that the developers are willing to kick in money on every project that goes forward with the new text amendment on waiving those, I've been able to kind of waiver a little bit on that. And seeing as how we don't waiver on the requirement to put in the streetlight conduit, was the developers don't put that in, have to donate the streetlights and everything else to the city of Las Vegas. You know, on the private gate, I like private gated communities, but then again, some of these small communities not having a gate and not being built to, you know, the public standards, being built to private street standards, I'm fine with. And I'm usually, usually against, you know, not meeting a connectivity ratio, and which is really important to me because in my neighborhood where we have seventy homes and just seeing how if somebody wants to go around to the Charleston side of our project, they would have to walk about three blocks to get all the way around or vice versa. And so connectivity ratios mean a lot when they're trying to gain access to commercial developments or other things such as a baseball park or whatever. In this particular instance, the reason why I'd be fine with it is because we're having a connectivity to Regina. And, you know, I'm sure academics would argue with me on this, but I think the neighbors would probably prefer not to have access out to Regina from within this community. So I could support that particular variance on that. The one thing that I was not clear on, and I could ask Public Works or planning on item thirty-three, the vacation. What was the reason for denial on the vacation? Oh, I apologize. Okay. All right. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Okay, I guess I'll close it out. So first of all, thank you, Mr. Celeste. I know there's been numerous neighborhood meetings, and we were more dense than we are now. There's been changes. You listen to the community. The people that lived on Regina didn't want to stare at a block wall. Flipped it, changed it, dropped the less intrusive eighteen lots, which is just adjacent to it, down to sixteen. I think it's harmonious and compatible, ten thousand square foot lots. Yes, in Ward Six, we do not like light pollution. We like horse trails. We like that kind of stuff. So we're in, I'm in favor of it. I'd like to make a motion to approve item thirty, GPA seven five nine five eight, with all staff conditions. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, as mentioned earlier, because that's a GPA, technically, we do not have a supermajority, so it's tantamount to a denial.
All right. So it shows it's failed, how it'll go on to city council. Item number thirty-two VAR seven five nine six zero, motion for approval with all staff conditions. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Item number thirty-three VAC seven five nine six one, motion for approval with all staff conditions. Cast your votes. And that motion passes. Item number thirty-four, TMP seven five nine six two, motion for approval with all staff conditions. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Did we do, did we approve thirty-one? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I thought we skipped one.
Okay, so, excuse me, number thirty-one ZON seven five nine five nine, motion for approval with all staff conditions. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, all of those items will move forward for city council consideration at their meeting of June fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, related items, number forty-five through fifty, GPA seven five nine nine seven, applicant owner TP one thousand LLC for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from rural density residential to RNP to SC Service Commercial at the southeast corner of Elkhorn and Walapie. Staff recommends denial. Item number forty-six ZON seven five nine nine eight for possible action or request for a rezoning from undeveloped rural density residential and RNP rural neighborhood preservation. General plan designation to C1 Limited Commercial, staff recommends denial. Item number forty-seven SUP seven five nine 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 for possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed thirty-five hundred square foot liquor establishment tavern use with a waiver to allow a six hundred and thirty-foot distance separation from a church house of worship where fifteen hundred feet is required. Staff recommends denial. Item number forty-eight SUP seven six zero 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 for possible action for a request for a special use permit for a proposed six thousand square foot beer wine cooler off sale establishment. Staff recommends denial. Item number forty-nine SDR seven six zero zero two for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed eighteen thousand five hundred square foot commercial development, including a six thousand square foot convenience store with fuel pumps and a canopy, restaurant drive-through lane, thirty-five hundred square foot tavern, five thousand square foot restaurant, four thousand square foot general retail space with a waiver to allow buildings not to be obstructed, or, excuse me, not to be orientated to the corner street footage where such is required. Staff recommends denial. Fifty TMP seven six zero zero one for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision. Staff recommends denial. And item number fifty, ZON seven six one four five, applicant owner TPM one thousand for proposed action on a request for rezoning from undeveloped RN Rural Neighborhood Preservation General Plan designation to RE Residential Estates on the southwest corner of Elkhorn and Yula Street. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please. Oh, wait, one more. TPM seven six zero zero four for possible action. Do I do that one? Do I do fifty-one or fifty-two?
I've got them separated.
Okay, I'll keep them separated. I'm going to keep them separate. Yep, I'm going to hear them separate. Yep. Okay, so, please. And give your report. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Excuse me, sir, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the project as proposed generally conforms to Title nineteen requirements. However, it is inconsistent with the provisions included in the two thousand and sixteen interlocal agreement to keep planning Area B parcels residential. As staff supports the interlocal agreement, it cannot recommend approval of any of the applicant's request. Please note that additional letters of support and protest were received after the publication of this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Richard Bryan, three hundred South Fourth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one oh one. I represent the applicants, the Becker family, who are longtime developers in the family. They are here in the room this evening if there are questions that are directed to them. I'm also joined by our planning consultant, Mr. Greg Borgell, the same address as I've just previously given you. This project has a considerable history, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. But let me explain, if I may briefly, and Mr. Borgell will point out the plan that's presently before you, which represents a compromise. This is a ten-acre parcel owned by the Becker family on the west, Walapie. On the north, Elkhorn. To the south, Whittick. And to the east, Yula. And you can see that on the western portion, we are proposing a commercial development. On the east, a housing development, which consists of six lots, each of which is two thousand square feet or more. With respect to the commercial development, there is a restaurant lounge, a restaurant, a convenience market, and there are four retail spaces. Now, this represents a compromise from the original proposal, which was before the city approximately three and a half years ago. And I think by way of contrast, it may illustrate what we have tried to do to accommodate some of the neighbors' concerns. The original project involved a request that all ten acres be rezoned for commercial. We had, that was before the city council. It was rejected on a four-to-three vote. We've had meetings with the neighbors. We've discussed aspects of this with them on several different occasions. And I want to point out what we have tried to do to respond to the neighbors' concerns, although I want to, in all fairness, that they do not favor any commercial at all. But here's what we've tried to do. The original plan contemplated a car wash. The neighbors expressed strong opposition to that. We've eliminated the car wash. We have provided for a lower-density housing on the eastern half, as I've explained, two thousand square feet. They indicated that they wanted to have the rural character of their neighborhood, and they wanted single-story. And they wanted a rural feel to it, and we've accommodated that. There's no access from the commercial development to the residential development. And we have planned a more extensive landscape buffer between the two. So those are some of the things that we did to address some of the neighbors' concerns. No ingress or egress from the commercial to the residential. Now, the staff report indicates, and frankly, we were originally led to believe that there would be a recommendation for approval, so let me just... So let me just, very briefly, with respect to the general plan agreement and the staff report, the staff concludes the density and intensity of the proposed general plan amendment is compatible with the existing adjacent land use designations. The zoning designations allowed by the proposed amendment will be compatible with the existing adjacent land uses or zoning projects. Their adequate transportation, recreation, utility, and other facilities, and the proposed amendment conforms to other applicable adopted plans. With respect to the zoning, the staff concluded that the proposal conforms to the general plan. The uses which would be allowed on the subject property by approving the rezoning will be compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning districts. Growth and development factors in the community indicate the need or the appropriateness of the rezoning. With respect to the special use permits that are sought, the proposed land use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing surrounding land uses and with future surrounding land uses as projected by the general plan. The subject site is physically suitable, and then it goes on and on. The other SUP that we saw indicates the proposed land use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing surrounding land uses and with future surrounding land uses as projected by the general plan. What caused the staff to ultimately recommend a denial was the interlocal government agreement, which is subject to this property. I am informed by the staff of the City Council, person in whose ward this is in, that the county has no objection. And so what we would ask you to do is to move forward and to approve this project, recognizing that it requires a supermajority, we would like, encourage you to move it forward. Now, there will be many neighbors here tonight, which is certainly their right, that will express strong opposition to the commercial aspect. We engaged an individual, Mr. Esposito, to do a survey, and I'll just share the excerpt of the survey. Out of 587 doors that we knocked on, we spoke to 199 of the people who shared their opinion of the project. 70 supported it, 60 are neutral, and 49 are against it. The point that I make is although the neighbors here tonight are strongly opposed to the commercial, I think it's fairness to say that there are neighbors who are supportive of the project. So again, we would urge your approval of the project as a general plan amendment, recognizing that it requires a supermajority, the special use permits, the zoning, and with respect to separate items that you're considering, I guess we'll talk about the residential at a separate point. We're here to respond to any questions that you might have, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the Commission, of either Mr. Borgell or myself or the developer, and we'd like to reserve an opportunity to respond to rebut any comments that the neighbors might have. So I would yield to you, Mr. Vice Chairman, if you'd like to ask us any questions at this point.
I'll save that for your rebuttal after public comment, if you, so if I can have you step to the side. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody on this side wish to speak?
Thank you very much.
Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road. I live in the area, and I also represent some of the neighbors in the area. Mr., is he attorney? Was there any disclosures I need to make? With all due respect to the Senator and Ms. Borgell, we couldn't find a letter from Commissioner Brown, who represents the county out there, showing support for this project. So I just wanted to bring that up. I'm not aware of the county supporting this project, and I don't have any letter in my possession showing that the county supports this project. I'd first like to say that, you know, staff recommend denial. We ask that you follow staff's recommendation for denial. East of Hualapai, and I know Commissioner is always familiar with the area as well, is very rural. There's rural preservation in the area as well. The applicant mentions in their justification letter that Elkhorn and Hualapai are 100-foot right-of-ways. While that is the case, the northeast of this property is a church. Putting a tavern across the street from a church is not appropriate. We talk about projects being harmonious and compatible. This is about as far from harmonious and compatible as you can get. Destroying the quality of life for neighbors and residents in the area is not what the City of Las Vegas is all about. This applicant, years ago, brought a similar proposal for this property, and it was denied by this Commission and the City Council. Bringing this back, looking for a different result, is just, in my opinion, a slap in the neighbors' faces. Commercial development on this property is not needed. Two weeks ago, a new Albertson Shopping Center opened up five blocks away on Hualapai. Two fast food restaurants opened. A C-store opened. A car wash opened. And as the applicant notes in their justification letter, there is commercial across the street on Hualapai. It's worth noting that that began construction in 2013, six years ago, was part of the Providence community, the one that I live in. Finally, as I noted earlier in this proposal, for commercial in 2015 was proposed, and I'd just like to show you real quick as I end, they look, this here is the 2015 proposal, sorry, this is the 2015 proposal, this is the 2019 proposal before you tonight. They don't look the same. They're not even close. They're two separate things that they're presenting here. And then finally, in closing, I will say this. Let me turn the microphone back on. These projects, they don't resemble each other. They've been, this commercial proposal's been denied in the past. The neighbors do not want this. It's not harmonious and compatible. It's not appropriate for this area, and again, we respectfully request that you deny these applications. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name for the record, please. Three minutes. Set the clock.
My name is Kinging Chew. I'll spell out my name, K-I-N-G-D-O-N-C-H-E-W, residing at 7250 Southern Magnolia Street, 89149, part of the Bristol Cone Ranch Development. I'm also formally submitting the Bristol Cone signatures of opposition. I'm here today to publicly state that I am opposed to the applicant's request for GPA 75997 and all its other related requests for commercialization. Upon receipt of your mailing, 50% and growing of the Bristol Cone Ranch homeowners have united to take stand against this proposal. We relocated to this community as we sought out a new neighborhood to start a new life, whether we're transplants from another state or other states, retiring baby boomers, or working-class people. What we all bear in common, as lessons learned from years past, that this proposal is not a good fit. Adding to the previous speaker before, it doesn't make sense when an established avenue of businesses along Durango Drive from Centennial to Farm Road exists with all the infrastructure in place. And lastly, a noted concern is that the increase of commercial traffic would jeopardize even more so to Centennial Hill High School students jogging along Walapai Way and all the nearby middle school kids crossing Elkhorn Road. The quality of life as we know it will be negatively affected. Lastly, keep it real, keep it residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please state your name for the record. Reset the clock.
Hi, my name is Amy Jackson. I live at 6932 Lakota Summit Court, and I'm opposed to this. And one reason is because ever since the Taco Bell convenience store, storage unit place went up, there's been an increase in amount of traffic, I mean, trash and litter. I walk around and pick up trash sometimes. There's cups, straws, Taco Bell sauce, receipts all over the place. This place would increase the trash and litter and the beauty of the area. Also, I see no compelling reason to put in another convenience store. It's zoned residential for a reason, there's no compelling reason to add another set of gas pumps. There's some across the street, there's two just less than a half a mile. So we really would like to trust the government, that you are interested in what the people have to say. All I've seen up here is you're going against the regular people and approving developers, every single one, and you're approving, everybody's approving everything against the people. I don't get it. We voted out our last commissioner for that reason. Our commissioner's not here tonight. I just don't understand. Do you, are you for the people? Or what is your motivation for voting for all these developers? I just really wish I could understand that. So anyway, I'm opposed to this, and I really would like to have more trust in you people. So I would please listen to us. So thank you.
Thank you. Next. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Noel Wyco. I live at 7233 Great Dover Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89166. I live in the Westminster Development in Providence, which is at the northwest corner of Elkhorn and Hualapai. I'd like to reiterate what everybody said before me. We that live there do not want this here. If you look at the developed area around it, everything in the immediate area, except for the Providence commercial development that was there when they started Providence, is all residential. We'd like to keep it that way. We don't see the need for another gas station. We have three within a half-mile radius of that area right now, three convenience stores, as they stated previously, that new Albertsons. And the traffic has increased immensely in that area since I moved in there, less than four, four years ago. The developer that has this property is historically predominantly a commercial developer, and I'd question why they purchased this piece of property. When they purchased this, it was zoned residential, has not changed since then, and should not be changed. It buffers the rural zone on the east, and everything, as I said previously, everything around it is residential. So don't see the need for another commercial establishment in that area. We're right down the road from Durango, which has plenty of restaurants, bars, other commercial areas that we can go to. I'm totally opposed to this and would hope that you would continue the denial of this as you did previously years ago. Thank you for your time. I'd like to also submit one card that I did not get to submit earlier.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Next, please state your name for the record. Reset the clock.
Wendy Martinez and my husband Greg Jelstrom.
Yeah, Greg Jelstrom, and we live on 10113 Dover, 89166. It's basically a cross corner from where this, what this will be. And I've lived there over 10 years, and when I bought the house, I looked at what the zoning was, and it was residential. And, you know, I might not have moved there if it was gonna be a gas station and a tavern. I kind of think these guys added the tavern as a red herring, that they can say, oh, see, we're cooperating, because who's gonna put a tavern next to the church? It's kind of a weird idea. So anyway, I just, why not put houses across the whole thing, and everybody be happy?
If I can add one more thing, I'm also a member of that church that's affected, and I can tell you, there are between 600 to 1,000 members that attend that church weekly on Sundays and multiple times during the week, as I'm sure a lot of the neighbors around there can attest to. We have activities for our youth. We have more than 200 youth that go to that building on a weekly basis and do activities there. So this would significantly affect the traffic through there, but also the church. We don't need the tavern next to a church or liquor license being approved. And then I echo everything else. We do not want commercial there. Our bedroom directly faces that. We are on the corner house facing across. My two next-door neighbors couldn't be here tonight, but they are both opposed to it. I don't know where they're getting the 70% that approved this, because I have not talked to a single neighbor that is for it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. State your name for the record, please. Set the clock.
My name is Randy Sterns, and this is my husband.
Jim Feldhouse.
Jim Feldhouse, and we live at 9865 Elkhorn Road. We live basically across the street from this proposed project, and if we, I want to agree with everything my neighbors have said, but also, if we had, I want to say that, for the record, that if we had known that it would be turned into C1, we would not have bought our property. We moved out there because it is a quiet rural neighborhood. People move there for a very specific reason. It's a special area. And should you approve this, you would be going, you would be setting a very bad precedent for neighborhoods like ours. The land use plan is supposed to protect neighborhoods like ours, specifically the RNP, and to go against that, and the Beckers have ignored many things about that area, including trying to make it commercial. And they also have been offered by builders to have homes built there, but they have decided to still stick with commercial. And it's very upsetting when you think about the way of life out there, to be there and have it be quiet, to live on an acre of land, to love to walk around in your neighborhood with horse pass, and that there are horses in the neighborhood. This is completely wrong to put this kind of project in this neighborhood. I hope, I implore you to please vote against it, to please show us that you're with the neighbors and hear us and with your constituents, to show us that you care about what we have to say too. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick before the next speaker, just to be expeditious, how many in here are against, by show hands? Okay. And how many are in support, by show hands? Okay.
Nobody knocked on my door to ask me if I.
And the reason, and the reason why, and the reason why I ask is because if we're gonna hear the same stuff, we already know, you know what I'm saying? So unless somebody's got something new to share, we're feeling what you're saying. So I would hope maybe you pick a spokesperson, or we're gonna be here for about three hours.
May I speak?
If you want to all speak, you go right ahead.
Very briefly. I'm not gonna reiterate, but I am gonna take note of something I've heard here tonight. I heard Commissioner Ross, Rose.
Can you state your name for the record, because I didn't get.
I'm sorry. Mary Sanders, 9945 Whittig Avenue. I live directly across from the property. I've lived there for almost 20 years now, and I heard you talk about continuity. And we're asking for continuity to continue with this particular rural area, and we're also asking you to do something very unusual. That's listen to your planning staff. Your planning staff are suggesting it be, not suggesting, they're recommending it be denied, and I hope you would consider that. Because if we can have continuity, and we can keep what we have and have residential, we have reiterated multiple times to the Beckers, give us residential, and we will work with you. We're not against commercial. We, instead, what we want is residential development. Thank you very much.
And thank you. State your name for the record. Reset the clock.
My name is Bridget Solvi, S-O-L-V-I-E, and I live at 7030 North Conquistador Street. So just a couple quick points, somewhat fresh. This one thing will be repeat. Can the audio actually zoom in on, or the AV zoom on this? This is the five-acre reduction that was denied after the 10-acre went to planning, and then when they went to City Council in December, it was reduced to the five. What they showed you earlier was the full 10. They gave some discussion about how they reduced it, but I just want to remind you, this is what was denied December 2015, when it was already reduced to five. This is what we've got today. Basically, the same five. We've got a tavern and a restaurant and the strip mall. The other one just had a restaurant and a convenience store. So we've actually increased the intensity with today's proposal on the five acres and more parking spaces. All right. And here's what I want to show you. On behalf of the neighbors, I believe I sent several of you an email and had this attached. Again, if AV can zoom in on that. I tried my best to do a hand-scratch overlay. Here's the GPA map of the notification area for all the postcards that residents received. I tried to draw that line as best I could, matching up the streets. These red dots that I pinned on are from the public record, taken from what was scanned in on your packet of all the addresses and postcards and emails that y'all received, plus the addresses that were just given to you by the Bristol Cone representative, because he gave me those so I could get them on the map. That's Bristol Cone right here. That's pretty, and we're still getting more. The RNP, which is the county people, which do have a voice, because we are notified and is covered through the interlocal, a lot of people don't like to hear the county talk to the city, but we do work together. This is county, and this is Providence. We've only got a few people actually chimed in with their emails, but I know there's more that haven't been received that I haven't seen, that y'all have still processing. The point is, please listen to the people. The people are overwhelmingly asking that you deny this project as a commercial. It is covered, this property, by the interlocal agreement. I spoke with Sue Baker yesterday afternoon, and she assured me on the phone that there has been no letter from Larry Brown to provide a modification to the interlocal agreement, that whether that's hearsay, that something has come through the pike, I have seen no letter. Sue Baker Council, or Commissioner Brown's liaison, has seen no document letter to give a modification to the interlocal agreement. Without a modification... Without a modification, the interlocal agreement covers this property. You've got two-layering of jurisdictions because of that interlocal. So, I would highly recommend you listen to staff, that you listen to the documents that are about this property, and that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Mark Wade. I'm a facilities manager for the Corporation, the Presiding Bishop of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, located at 9830 West Elkhorn Road. We sent an objection letter earlier today, but also we feel that the zone change and variances were being compatible and detrimental to the neighborhood, and contrary to the reasonable expectations of the church and other homeowners, as well as inconsistent with the city's master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carlos Montoya. I live at 7380 Southern Magnolia in the Bristol Cone Ranch Development. I see no value added to our neighborhood. I love my neighborhood. I, I'm here representing and want to mirror my neighbors and my neighborhood, and I oppose this project.
Thank you very much. Please state your name.
Michelle Deschon, 9690 Whittig Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. I just wanted to come up because I have on a cool jersey. Just kidding. Anyway, nobody liked that. Besides everything everybody else said, the one thing I wanted to point out that was in 2015 when this was denied, also the mayor denied it. Carolyn Goodman did say no to this project, and at that time, then twenty acres north of this parcel was vacant. D.R. Horton came in and developed that. They took, you know, heat on that and said, "Okay, not going to be commercial. Let's make it homes." And then south of that project was five acres, and that was developed, or is being developed by Richmond American Homes. So, you know, I just don't understand why someone else can break all the rules, but I think they need to follow and do what's right for the neighborhood and what goes with the rest of the properties. Good nights. Thank you.
Thank you. You can clap to that. I think they're winning right now. Okay, please state your name for the record.
Stephen Cooper, 7225 Southern Magnolia Street, 89149. My home is directly north of this, right across Elkhorn. Lived there for a year and a half, and I bought there believing that that site would be residential, with families that respect my property as much as I respect theirs. I am against this commercial, just like everyone else here is, for safety reasons and many other things. But I wanted to say is that, they said they did a survey. I've been there a year and a half. No one's asked, no one from the Becker family or their corporation has asked me what I thought about that. No one's come to my house for a survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Suzanne Williams. My address is 9685 Elkhorn Road, and just moved to that property a couple of years ago, and I love the beauty of the area. I think that I have a concern about something I heard in one of the prior RNP discussions was that something about beautifying the RNP area. And the beauty about our RNP area, if you take a look, please go home and take a look at the crime mapping of the RNP area. We don't have curbs. We don't have walls. We don't have huge lights. Look at the crime mapping of the RNP area. It's virtually scot-free of crime. It's a unique, quiet area that I love very much. I want to keep it that way. Elkhorn, in my, also in my letters, has become a speedway. If you add onsite consumption to that road, you have children from the middle school who have to cross that road on Grand Canyon and teepee. It's very dangerous as it is. You add onsite alcohol consumption in that area, it will, we will have issues with, hopefully not children, and hopefully not with any other cars. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Tom Michel. I live at 7222 Queens Crescent Street. Our backyard overlooks this property. I just wanted to say that the most expensive thing that most of us will ever invest in is our homes. My partner and I moved from Salt Lake City, but before, from New York City, and we very specifically picked this area of Las Vegas, and we love Las Vegas. We're never going to leave. We love it here. The one thing that is heartbreaking to me, though, I will tell you, is if, is standing on our deck at night and looking out and thinking, "Oh, my God, are we going to be looking at gas pumps? And are we going to be looking at a convenience strip across the street?" I, in all of my years living in New York City, and there were some vociferous arguments about what people do with various things, you know, I didn't know, because we've lived here for two years, I didn't know what the feeling was about this particular piece of property until we went to a meeting with the developers about four or five weeks ago, and you know what? About a hundred people turned out, and all of a sudden, I thought, "Oh, my God, we're not alone. We're not alone. There are other people that want this neighborhood to be the same as it is now." We are all for development. I was a Manhattanite for thirty years. I'm all for it, but not in this particular place. And as I said, you know what? Do we really need commercial across some commercial? And do we really need, with all the people in this area, to kind of look and go, "Oh, my God, I'm sorry I built here," or "I'm sorry I moved here. That's not why we did it." So, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. State your name, please.
My name is Ross Coletta. I live at 7216 Queens Crescent Street. My wife and I have lived there for the last three and a half years. I was, prior to this, I was a public official, and I was an elected official in northern Nevada, and I can tell you I've experienced what some of you are experiencing right now, but never have I ever seen the kind of consensus develop around an issue like I've seen around this. This community is overwhelmingly opposed to this development, and to have this many people here tonight, when the Golden Knights are playing the seventh game in the series, speaks volumes. I hope you will listen to the people, you'll listen to what we're saying. This is not something we want in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Ooh, we got right in there, didn't we?
David Robinson, 722 Queens Crescent Street. David Robinson, 722 Queens Crescent Street. I just want to say one thing. That ward there, the church there, they actually have three congregations that meet there. It's not just a single congregation. Four, there's four that share that building, plus there's children's programs and scouting during the week. So, to have a 24-hour tavern across the street, I don't see how anybody could do that in good conscience, to someone's faith.
Okay? Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Pat Goodwin. I'm at 9727 Shimmering Falls Court, Las Vegas, 89149. And as well as with all the other neighbors, very much opposed to this. I actually, every single morning, I go out and I run on Elkhorn and I run around Walopie. It's already dangerous. Ever since you guys approved Elkhorn going through, Elkhorn is a raceway, and the more traffic that you allow from the commercial development is just going to be much more of a hazard. And if you, if you guys would actually go out to Elkhorn, you would see, there is no safe, complete safe passage from one end, from like Conquistador up to Walopie. So, you have to have pedestrians in the street. So, you have two lanes of traffic going, and you have pedestrians, and there's several of us that walk our dogs every morning as well. So, you have pedestrians and pedestrians with dogs trying not to get hit by cars. So, I just don't see why you would need to have commercial in that area. Also, from running and walking around the area, it's 1.7 miles from that area down to Durango, where there's a, where there's a shopping. Now, you have the new Albertsons with two convenience stores over there and gas pumps, which is less than a half-mile. And then if you go about three-quarters of a mile the other way, you have the New Smiths that was built over there, and they have gas pumps. So, we don't need another gas station. We don't need more convenience stores, and we certainly don't need taverns. All I need is to have a drunk driver hit me when I'm running in the morning. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Bruce. I live at 9880 Elkhorn Road. This is my husband.
Steve Stetson.
I, pretty much everything my neighbors have said, I'd also like to add that I left kitty-corner to this project, and nobody ever came to my door and asked me how I felt about it. All the people that we brought, nobody said that anybody surveyed them to ask them how they felt about it. I think that it's important to note one thing, that we have worked with other developers, D.R. Horton and Richmond American, which are on both sides of that property, and we've always come to an agreement or a consensus with the neighbor, and this developer has just refused to listen to us and not make any, just completely ignores what the neighbors want, even though, I mean, it's like we're here justifying why it should remain residential. It's zoned residential, okay? The burden should be on him, and he has not addressed any reason why this property should go to commercial. There's no, no support for it, and I hope that you would leave it as a residential area.
The home was built in 2001 with --
Pull the mic close. Pull the mic, please.
The home was built in 2001 with residential in mind and zoned all around the area. Probably wouldn't have done that if we knew commercial was going to be next door, across the street. The local police, from Grand Canyon to Walopie, is 25 mile an hour. The cops cannot keep up with that. He'll hit, you know, before he gets done writing a traffic ticket, the next one, he'll, soon as he parks, the next one he hits, he's writing another ticket. So, yeah, the alcohol with that, simple math, right?
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Diane Lewis. I live at 10227 New Boston Avenue. This is my husband David Lewis, who lives at the same address. And I just wanted to share my concerns. Four years ago, I was living in Summerlin, before they were doing all of their major development there, and when they started to put in all the new casinos, the mall, now we have a baseball field, I just said, "I need to leave. I want to get out into a more open area." My daughter and her husband with my grandbabies came out here, and we both moved into Westminster there, which is directly across the proposed development, and we came out here wanting a nice, quiet area to live. And we looked around the area and saw that that was R1, and we knew we were safe there as far as keeping it R1 and not having a big commercial development. Happened to us again, but basically, we kind of got run out of Summerlin with all of their development, moved out here specifically for the nice, quiet, open area. And we would respectfully request that you listen to our concerns, because we want it to remain R1 so that we can continue living in the type of area we moved into, but thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Burns. I live at 9756 Shimmering Falls Court, 89149. We were at the meeting three weeks ago, city council meeting, or the development meeting. My old daughter was, she asked me, "Dad, am I going to be able to go in it?" And I said, "Probably not." She goes, "Dad, why do we need another gas station? There's already two." I said, "I don't know, Brooke. I do, that's what they want to do. We don't want it. We want residential. Please keep residential. Thanks."
Thank you.
And my name is Dave Lewis. I live at 10227 New Boston. I just wanted to say, numbers are very important, and the people presenting the program here gave a bunch of numbers in the beginning, and they said that overwhelmingly, they had enough people to deny, excuse me, to approve the thing going through, and not very many people to deny it. Well, we have more people here right now than the numbers he gave, and that doesn't have anything to do with the numbers four or five weeks ago, that we had a whole building full of people that were just deny, deny, deny. Those are the numbers you really got to look at, because right now, the numbers that they gave and the numbers that we have here, they don't match up for some reason. I just want to bring that to your attention. I'm sure you see it. He had a raising of the hands, right? So, that's, that should be your answer right there. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name, please.
My name is Carlos Delling. I live at 9757 Shimmering Falls Court. I just want to keep it short. I want everybody to say what they want to say, but I think the real reason for this is it's all about money. They just want to make more money. They don't care about our residents around the area. That's all it is, is money.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Jessica Campagna. I live at 9660 Whittig Avenue, and I just wanted to come up and say that when we had the neighborhood meeting with the Beckers, one of the things that they said was that they wanted to enhance the community and bring value to the neighborhood and bring the community together. And while I absolutely don't think that a tavern and a gas station and convenience store will do that, I will say that this process has. There's been plenty of city folks, if you want to raise your hand if you live in the city, and oppose this project. If you want to raise your hand if you live in the county, it has gotten a lot of the city and county folks to really talk to each other, realize our commonalities, and get to know our neighbors. So, I just wanted to say that I oppose this project, but I do really value the community building that it's brought.
Thank you. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and I'll ask Senator, come back up, please, for rebuttal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission. I'd like to yield to Greg Borghell for a couple of moments to make some technical observation, and then I'll briefly summarize.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board, Greg Borghell, 300 South Fourth Street. I wanted to speak just for a moment to rebut the assertion that was made by the principal early speaker on the other side here, that this is the same proposal that was previously denied, and it isn't the same proposal, and the reason for that is the reservation, as shown in the next two agenda items before you, of this area for RE development. And the change that that makes to the project overall is that we now have a project that has, in essence, buffered itself and responded to all of the neighbors' stated concerns the last time the project was in front of you, and that is to say, on the west and the north, we have 100-foot rights-of-way, which are being fully developed in conjunction with this project, which, first of all, match up on the west with existing commercial, and secondly, face across the street to the rear of a residential development, not the fronting on. Here, all existing RE development has been designed to be matched with new RE development on the east half of the project, so that what we have is 100-foot right-of-way, 100-foot right-of-way. RE matches RE, and RE matches RE. And so, the developer here is not presenting the same thing that was presented before. He did come in with commercial before. He did talk about 10 acres. He did talk about five acres, but we have before you tonight a package arrangement that responds to legitimate concerns that people in RE homes should, should be facing RE homes, and everything else is surrounded by appropriate development proposals, as defined by your staff. Obviously, I'm a planner, as you know, and it isn't surprising, I reached the same conclusion your staff did, that this is the right design for the parcel, and that's what they have recommended, save and accepting the fact that the interlocal agreement has not been approved in writing by the county. But I'll defer to Senator Bryan in response to those issues.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the commission, I understand there's resistance to change. I grew up in this community. There were 10,000 people. There were 10,000 people.
Please.
In Las Vegas, when we moved into our Hunt Ridge home, Charleston was not cut through the Maryland Parkway. Obviously, as this community has grown, the demand for housing, additional commercial, and other amenities is part of what's occurring in our community. One of the individuals who spoke said, "Look, just follow the direction of your staff." May I respectfully suggest, I think that's what I would urge you to do. The staff has indicated, and I'm not going to repeat this, that they like the project. In other words, it's compatible, and you heard all that. That's in your staff report. They like this project.
Please show some respect, Senator. Please show, they didn't do anything when you guys were doing your thing. Just let them speak, okay? Please, thank you.
Thank you. But what I'm saying, Mr. Vice Chairman, is that the staff, well, let me put it this way. I'm an advocate, obviously. I have a bias. I'm for a client who wants to do something. Obviously, the neighbors here have an emotional attachment to your home. The only neutral party in this whole thing is your staff. They are the professionals, and what they are saying is that this is -- And what they are saying is that this is compatible. They support the planning aspect of this. The only reservation that they expressed was the inter-local agreement. We understand that that's our obligation. I'm informed that the commissioner and the county has indicated that he has no objection to this. Unfortunately, he's been ill and unavailable for the last couple of weeks. And finally, if I might briefly respond, that the survey that was done knocked at some 587 homes. My experience, you have more experience in this, you listen to these every so many weeks, is that only those who tend to oppose a project show up. I understand that. So again, I would just urge you to support the recommendation of your staff on the planning aspect. Let this move forward. I understand it's a general plan agreement, it requires a supermajority, and we will continue to work with the county to make sure we satisfy the provisions of the inter-local agreement. And I would indicate that we're further amenable to talking to members of the, of the community in terms of anything that they would like to discuss that are changes within the commercial. We cannot agree that no commercial is suitable here. That's, that's not a point that we can negotiate with them. But if there's some aspect of the commercial that would ease their concerns, we're amenable to discuss that with them. And thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman, members listening to us all.
Thank you. Any, any further comments?
Only if you have additional questions, Mr. Chairman.
Not at this time. I'll, I'll stop that for a second and move it over to, uh, planning staff, commissioners, anything? Commissioner Roush?
Are you ready to make a motion? I apologize, I didn't want to jump in front of you.
No, I, comments, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that are my opinion only. This, this vote tonight has, excuse me, the city attorney has mentioned, really is not a final vote and really has little bearing. It has to move forward unfortunately as a denial, which is unfortunate, just by the matter of circumstance, because we don't have a, a real majority here, a supermajority. And I know you gentlemen understand that. It's always difficult when you're talking about development in an area where it's been rural living for a long time. And we have a difficult decision to make up here. And I heard a lot of the residents' comments and I sympathize with all of you. I would ask you to all be respectful of the difficult decision that we have to make. I heard a lot of disrespectful comments, as many as I heard respectful ones, unfortunately. And we're trying to do what's in the best interest of everyone. And to act like you should only have the, the final say and that the developer or the owner of a property has no rights is also not fair. Just like you have property rights for your home. I do understand and agree that you have a big investment, it's probably your single largest investment. But this is America and everyone has rights and we have to all come together and try to figure out what's the best thing for everyone. It's a 10-acre parcel. It was originally 100% commercial. The developer has decided to cut it in half and, excuse me. I'd like to finish, please. I'll defer to the chairman however he wants to handle people as they become unruly, but I would like to just make my comments, please. The checkerboard pattern of development that we have in this valley where the BLM owns large parcels throughout the valley is what's pushing home builders and commercial developers into neighborhoods that is creating a disruption that we deal with on a daily basis. The problem that we listen to on an every meeting occasion is people who don't want to see development next door to them, across the street from them, down the street from them, a development plan that they don't like. And quite frankly, there's absolutely no way that we can make everybody happy. This application is half the size or impact on the neighborhood as what it used to be. It sits on two major arterials that are 100-foot rightaways and something's got to go there. Now, I do understand the church and its proximity and I have consistently been a large advocate, I think in almost every vote that I've ever made, in terms of denying applications where they're asking for a waiver for gaming and liquor uses. And in this instance, I will continue to be consistent in that regard. But I do think that commercial is the appropriate use on this five-acre parcel. And I think that the developer is giving you a gift in terms of the half-acre lots adjacent on the other side. They could have come in with a lot of different other applications. They could have come in with something that was mixed-use. They could have come in with mini-storage. They could have come in with apartments. There's a lot worse neighbors you could have had on that other five-acre side. I would say you should probably make your best deal you can on the 100-foot rightaways and hope for the least impact possible. I won't be supporting the application for the liquor piece of the, of the requests tonight, but I will be supporting the rest of the commercial application for the reasons I've stated. These are merely my opinions. You're all entitled to your own opinions. Thank you for giving me the time to say so.
Thank you, Commissioner Roush. Commissioner Tucson?
Yes, I'm, I'm familiar with this parcel. I was just out there last month and the month before, I had a class out in Providence. And I understand how the homeowners feel. I, I continue, we had a five-story building on Sahara across from Canyon Gate, 2007, that the homeowners were death-set against and we wanted to work with the developer at that point in time to go for the three-story building. We wanted to work with the developer and for whatever reason, we couldn't. It appears to me that this developer, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, is willing to work with you because part of that parcel is going to be, is, is homes now. It's, it's not commercial, it's residential. Anytime you have, excuse me, development, especially like out in Ward 6, where more and more people are moving out there, it's going to require more and more services. It really is. And I know you don't want some of these services and I get that. But the people that move in after you are going to need these services. I was just, I just went to that Albertsons, it's a beautiful Albertsons. I went there, went grocery shopping and I thought it was great. And I remember there were people who were against that Albertsons. And I'm sure that the people now that are shopping at Albertsons are very happy that they have Albertsons there. This is a difficult issue. It really, it really is. My heart goes out to the homeowners. I know how you feel. I probably would, as a homeowner, would probably feel the same way that you do. I haven't quite made up my mind yet exactly what I'm going to do, but I do think that this particular project is compatible with, with the, with the area. Thank you.
Nothing? Okay, so I'll take off from here. So, this is, uh, this in my mind has been a very difficult bunch of agenda items and it has been since it's been presented to me. I know it has re- deep history since 2015. I know under Ross, I believe if I'm not mistaken, and Senator, you can chime in and let me know if I'm off cue, but at one point in time, it was designed all residential and it was opposed even when it was all residential. I think it was 40 lots at one point in time. Are you familiar with what it was very back in 2015?
I'm not aware, I, Greg Borghel- I tried to respond to that. I'm not aware that that occurred back in 2015. I am aware that there have been attempts to lay out residential development on the property, which has never reached the point of coming to this board or, or the city council.
Okay. Maybe I'm going back a little further than I thought, but at one point in time, it was, it was a pretty 99%, 100% sure that was like 40 lots on that 10, almost 10 acres. It's almost 10 acres. And then this came up in 2018 as almost 10 acres of commercial. And I, I could see why they would have shot that down. At that point in time in 2015, that landscape in that area was totally different than what it is right now. And so, I could see why that, that got shot down. But I look at this application right now and I say, okay, well, it came with a happy medium. If you could put your board back up of what you're proposing, please, so that way everybody can follow along with me. Okay, so, we have a long Ula that was asked that the people that lived in that area, they did not want to stare at a block wall, they didn't want to stare at a landscape buffer, they wanted to stare at houses with driveways that let out, so frontages of houses faces frontage of houses. They wanted the rural accommodations. Now, these are things that have been brought to my office, brought to my attention through emails, that, that if, if it was going to happen and it was going to go down, then this is the stuff, this was the hill worth dying for. And that was, they had to have the rule in this, which I, I agree with you 100%. That's just how we like it out there in Ward 6. So, they didn't want the site improvements and, on, on that street. Then on Whitting, the people that, the two houses that are there said, hey, listen, I don't want to stare at a block wall. I want to make sure that those two, those people, so they turned that around. So those two parcels faced the existing residential that was there to make it more harmonious and compatible with the community. Then them splitting it up and taking the other five acres and turning it into commercial, my great concern was, of course, now, I don't think it's going to bring that much more traffic to the community, why I say that, because it's the community that's going to be using this. I'm not going to come from where I live on Grantine, Town and Jones, and go get gas in your neighborhood, I'm just going to tell you. So, I think it's the people that live in that neighborhood that are going to utilize those services nowhere outside, maybe a mile or two within. They might go to it, but like you said, there's other gas stations a half a mile or within a quarter mile of that location. But I was worried about traffic, so I got, I made sure I got with the proper chain of command and I heard that the, there is going to be a street light installed on the corner of Elkhorn and Huallapai, which raised one of the questions of, lady stated she walks a dog, it's kind of crazy right now, it's, it's, it's like a drag strip through there. Well, hopefully that light will put a stop to that. It's a desperate need. I like that the commercial does back up and fall in line with an existing commercial on that corner. I mean, if you're going to put commercial, put it right next to an existing commercial. Then to the south of that proposed commercial is, if I'm not mistaken, that's all R1, which are smaller lots than what's being proposed by this developer, substantially smaller than what's being proposed by this developer. So I took that into consideration. Then it was raised, well, I don't want the people that get those lots, those 20,000-square-foot lots staring into my property, so I want to make sure I put a restriction of one-story homes on there. So the developer, as far as I'm concerned, agreed to it. And if, again, if I'm outside the box, let me know, Senator, to do one-story homes, to be more harmonious and compatible to the community. So they reached out and they said, hey, we're going to give you real set standards, we're going to give you one-story homes, we're going to give you 20,000-square-foot lots, we're going to make sure we face every bit of existing homes that exist, that would be truly affected. Now you go across the street to Huallapai, or, excuse me, or Elkhorn, and you got the commercial and the existing, the proposed new residential stare at existing backyards, which has zero effect as far as any aesthetics or anything that I could see with 100-foot right-of-way. I think, no, I know, you know, change is tough, it really is. But we're at a position right now where, to me personally, I think this is harmonious and compatible. Do I have a little rub with the tavern? I absolutely did. Did I have a little rub with the on-sale liquor at the, at the store? And I mentioned it to Senator Bryan when I had the meeting with him. I actually do. And I kind of wanted to know at first how staff approved allowing the distance separation issue. And they told me it was because of the 100-foot right-of-way. Because of the 100-foot right-of-way, it kind of gives them that ability to make a recommendation for approval. So then I asked, I said, okay, well, what's the soft denial for? And the soft denial was for because Commissioner Brown, at that point in time, till we were able to get to him, hadn't chimed in. And because of the inter-local agreement, he had to have his two cents. By all means, we wanted it. And from what I understand, he has no problem with this development. Now, whether or not there's a letter exists, I don't know. But I have been informed that he does not have a problem with this development. So that was where the soft denial came in, when it was originally, when you hear Senator Bryan, the applicant, representing the applicants coming in saying, hey, this is harmonious and compatible, it works, it fits, but wait, I'm going to pull back that and make it a denial because we're kind of dealing with an inter-local agreement. I really, truly believe the developer did reach out and do their due diligence and take the voices and the concerns from the people that are most affected, which are the people that back up to that five acre. And, you know, I, I got to leave it right there. I'm really torn, but I, I have to say that I fully support, and I was against, the same as Commissioner Roush, on item 47, until staff had to let me know that because of that distance separation of the right-of-way, that's what made it, uh, okay. So, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it at, at the way it sits right now. But like you said, we're not the last, last body here. It's going to move on regardless of, if it moves forward with approval or denial, it still goes to city council for final. But I, I could support this because as Commissioner Roush pointed out, as a landowner, and if you are too, there's nothing really stopping them from throwing something at us in the kitchen sink and then us having to look at that. And hopefully, it's not as intrusive as what you think this is. You know, they could come in with a whole lot more heavier use if they wanted and we'd have to sit through the whole thing all over again. And I think having 20,000-square-foot lots in today's day and age, when developers want 6,000-square-foot lots, is a huge plus and a huge win for you guys. And that's just, just how I see it. You may not agree with me. I, I respect each and every one of you in your opinion. And we do try to do the best we possibly can up here to, on these infill projects to try to make it as harmonious and compatible as possible. And I truly believe that 20,000-square-foot lots, backing up to 20,000-square-foot lots and, and really zero effect to those that, when this is on the corner, other than the rub with the tavern, I think it's a good deal. I really do. And that's my personal opinion and I respect each and every one of yours, just so you know. So with that said, I wouldn't, anything?
Yes, I, I appreciate you going to everybody else before coming to me because I have been having trouble formulating my thoughts on this and, because I've been back and forth on this over and over and over. I mean, when I first seen it, I didn't like it and then I thought it was compatible and then hearing from neighbors, you know, and then looking at the, looking at the lot adjacent to this with, you know, the subway and the fuel pumps and everything, has a considerable amount of landscaping around it and it's pretty shielded from, from that neighborhood, which I think they did a, the neighborhood and property did a fantastic job with trying to minimize the impact on that neighborhood. I do like certain things such as the residential lots towards the east. I do also respect the neighborhood when they have this many people that come out in opposition. When, when it's a particular neighborhood where it hasn't been as developed as this neighborhood, you know, we'll usually get a few people out in opposition, or maybe 20 people out in opposition. We've had quite a, quite a few people out in opposition this evening. However, in San Diego as well, I mean, there is, or there are other commercial properties, the Taco Bell and the Pizza Hut and Albertsons up and down Huallapai. So, even though I wouldn't necessarily be in support of a tavern, I mean, just as the gentleman said, you know, his daughter wouldn't be able to go eat at that restaurant, I, I feel that a restaurant would be appropriate on this site. I feel that, you know, possibly a convenience store could, could be acceptable. However, I'm not, I'm not really in support of putting more fuel pumps and putting more alcohol into a convenience store in that neighborhood. So, I'm a little bit torn on this. I think, I think something that needs to go there, something can go there, and I think it might be able to be massaged a bit. I think a few of these items could have my support, but overall, I feel a lot of them need to be worked out a little bit better before it hits city council. That's my thoughts. And I'll go ahead and wrap it up with that.
Okay, anybody, any of the commissioner have anything to add? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to, yeah, and I also would like to point out on the, on the landscape buffer between the two parcels, I think that's what, 32-foot buffer? It's 12, 20-foot and then the landscape? What's the overall width of that buffer?
I, I have that here. In general, you're correct, Commissioner, that what we've done is maximized the landscaping where it faces or could be affecting the residential. So that if you look on the page in which staff calls out what's being done, we have 15 feet of landscaping on the north, 20 feet on the south. Except we're adjacent to the right-of-way, where there, we're at 12 feet, but we have 20 feet on the balance of the south. On the east, we have 20 feet. And frankly, that's an amenity to our future residential as much as anything else. But its point is, adjacent to the residential, we've put in 20 where the standard would have been much less. And then on the west, we're at 13 where 15 would be required, but that's where we face the rest of the commercial. So on balance, what we've done is provided more landscaping overall than would otherwise be required, but we've enhanced it further where it's adjacent to or can be seen by an existing or proposed residential. And less so where it's facing either the commercial across the street or areas where it wouldn't be easily observed. So, yes, we have more landscaping and we've, we focused it on the areas that would abut residential.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to make a motion. We'll see where it goes. All right, I'm going to make a motion, we'll see where it goes. Item number 45, GPA 75997, I'll make a motion for approval. And that motion only fails because we only have four. Okay, motion for approval on ZON 75998. And that motion passes. Motion for approval on SUP 75999. And that motion fails. Would anybody entertain another motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item 47, SUP 75999, move to follow staff's recommendation for
And that motion fails as well. Fails as well. It's denied. Same, yeah. Okay, item number 48, SUP 76000, motion for approval. And that motion fails. Can I get another motion?
Yes, Chairman Salvio, on item 48, SUP 76000, move to follow staff's recommendation
And that motion passes as a fail. STR 76002, motion to approve. And that's a tie. Can I add to that?
Which is a fail. Mr. Chairman, on item 49, STR 76002, I move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
And that also fails. Item number 50, TMP 76001, motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, before, on that item, we would request that you delete condition number five. It's in relation to CCNR, which is not required for a commercial property.
So noted.
Condition five.
Condition number five on 50. You heard the motion? Please cast your vote. Motion to approve. And that passes.
Mr. Chairman, all those items will move forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on June 5th, 2019.
Thank you, and thank you for the extra time you devoted to the consideration.
Okay, related items. Number 50 and, 51 and 52, ZON 76145, applicant owner TPM 1000 LLC for possible action, I request for a rezoning from undeveloped RNP rural neighborhood preservation, general plan designation to RE residential estates on the southwest corner of Elkhorn and Ula Street. Staff recommends approval. And TPM 76004, item 52, for proposed action, I request for a tentative map for a six-lot single-family residential subdivision. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, the existing undeveloped zoning district is a temporary classification until development is proposed. In this instance, the applicant is proposing a large lot, single-family development with a residence estate zoning district, which conforms with the existing RNP land use designation. The proposed tentative map conforms to Nevada revised statutes and Title 19 requirements for tentative maps, and the Department of Public Works has administratively approved deferral of off-site improvements along Ula Street and Whittig Avenue. The proposed tentative map also meets the minimum lot size requirement set forth by the interlocal agreement, and staff recommends approval of both requests. Please note that additional letters of support and protest were received after the publication of this item. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board, Greg Borghell, again, 300 South Fourth Street. We now address only the six RE lots on the eastern portion of the overall 10 acres. The applicant has reviewed and agreed to the staff's recommendations, which were, of course, for approval, but also had conditions that he has accepted. In light of the staff comments, it, it seems pretty self-evident that this is entirely compatible, and as you know, we view it as part of a package deal with the commercial, but viewed separately, it obviously is completely compatible, and we would hope you would follow the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. This is noticed as a public comment. Anybody wish to be heard on these items? Please step forward, state your name for the record, set the clock at three minutes.
Absolutely, I'm going to step forward. Bridget Solvi, 7030 North Conquistador Street. This is exactly what we want. Compliance with both city general plan, which says the zoning is residential, and the old zoning of what it was when it was county, which was the RNP. And the applicant, although they stripped off the 40 feet all the way down the length to make that commercial we just talked about happen, whole nother story there, nobody listened to that one. This is half acres and is compliant with both layers, the interlocal and what the city has already recognized as a residential and old RE, RNP, they're recognizing is not an overlay, but it still carries that name, nomenclature. This I agree with. This I support. Yay! Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing. I'm extremely depressed that the board did not follow proper rules of order and remained discussing this project and didn't keep it separate from the other. That was bad.
Hi.
Please state your name.
My name is Mary Sanders, 9945 Whittig Avenue. I live across from these, this property that's being proposed. I'm not opposed to residential. I'm opposed to that they did not bring it to the neighborhood meeting. It was basically just an after sight of, while we're thinking about doing this. So this is actually the first time the neighbors have actually seen this, and I don't even think we got a card. I didn't get a card about this. So even though I think it's a good idea for the six acre, or six lots, like Bridget's talking about, I do think that it should have been brought to the neighborhood and we could have had discussions before it goes to the city council. And I, as you can well understand, I'm very disappointed because I'm kitty-cornered to that property of the commercial, and I think there have been some things that have been proposed by the, the developer that have not been true, and I think you've been misled, and I just want to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on these items? All right, seeing none, the applicant, please come back up. Would you like to rebut?
I don't see that there was anything there we would care to rebut. We're glad they're happy with this, as I said, I think everyone understands, we view this as a package development. We would hope we can go forward with both the commercial, which had some discussion, and this, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Anybody else, right, we're closing, it's already closed? Go ahead, Councilman.
Commissioner Schlotman and Mr., yes, Mr. Chairman, I think this is completely compatible. I think this is exactly what, what, what it needs, and I don't think we need to hold up this application for any other reasons, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item 51, ZON 76145, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, item 52, TMP 76004, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, those two items will be heard as a part of the city council agenda on June 5th, 2019.
Thank you again, and good evening.
All right, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Related items, fifty-three through fifty-six, Z O N seven-five-nine-eight-zero, applicant D.R. Horton, owner of nineteen ninety-seven Morton M.F. Wong and Eunice Elizabeth Wong, revocable trust for possible action on a request for rezoning from R.E. to R-one on the north side of Deer Springs Way and east of Walupai Way. Staff recommends approval. V A R seven-five-nine-eight-one for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a one-point-zero-zero connectivity rate where one-point-three-zero is the minimum required. Private streets not constructed to public street standards without an access gate, and private streets to terminate in a stub street where cul-de-sacs or hammerheads are required. Staff recommends denial. V A C seven-five-nine-eight-three for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate U.S. government patent easement generally located on the north side of Deer Springs Way and east of Walupai Way, which staff recommends approval. And item number fifty-six, T M P seven-five-nine-eight-four for possible action on a request for tentative map for a proposed sixteen-lot, single-family residential subdivision with a waiver to allow one-hundred-and-eighty-one-foot intersection offset where two-hundred-and-twenty feet is required. Staff recommends denial. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rezoning would allow six-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot lots, while the underlying general plan designation limits density to three-point-five-nine units per acre. The proposed rezoning would allow lot sizes less than ten-thousand square feet, which is not allowed by the interlocal agreement. The tentative map proposed by the applicant also contains lot sizes which are less than ten-thousand square feet. Therefore, staff has revised its recommendation and does not support the rezoning request. Staff has no objection to the vacation request. The applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the waiver of variances. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the vacation request but denial of the rezoning variance and tentative map. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Ethan Thompson, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton.
I didn't catch your name?
Ethan Thompson.
Okay.
Excuse me. So, this is a zone change application for this, I'll direct your attention to the overhead, for this five-point-zero-nine-acre property just north of Deer Springs Way, in between Walupai and Yula. Currently, there's a commercial center being built just to the west of this property and to the south of this property. The homes directly to the north notably are zoned R-one currently, and to the east are R-D. I want to make sure that I point out that everything west of Yula Street is R-one and commercial currently, and everything to the east is a different story. It's R-D, and the lot sizes are bigger. I'll direct your attention here to the tentative plan. As you'll see, there's a T-intersection here, and staff has raised concerns about the connectivity ratio. We are willing to agree to a condition to add an additional connection to Yula Street, which would resolve the connectivity ratio issue, and we believe that that is important to keep the neighborhood consistent. We believe that the project will serve both the interests of the city and our clients. I want to make sure that I put on the record that we believe that this use is consistent with the current neighborhood. As I've noted, the homes directly north of this proposed site are zoned the exact same way that we're seeking a zone change for, and believe that we can remain consistent with the existing neighborhood, and so we would urge your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. This is noticed as a public comment. Please come up, state your name, and set the clock to three minutes.
The tentative map. Good evening, I'm Bridget Salvi of seventy thirty North Conquistador Street. I live in this neighborhood. I'm going to borrow his map, just because he has it here. I have no problem with the residential. I think that's a great thing. We were concerned whether this was going to flip for another commercial or not. It looks like it is not. It's going to stay residential. Two concerns, and I think traffic noted it, also with the connectivity. This intersection right here, I'm hoping that overhead audiovisual has zoned in. This right here has got a median that's already pretty hairy, and they're proposing another break in the median. This is going to be an issue. I would rather see this ended as just a solid wall and have all connectivity come out on Yula. Safety for the people that are living here, safety for everybody that's going already crazy in and out of the Albertsons. I come out Yula from my house, and people are already flipping U-turns that came out of Albertsons so they can go back home, because for whatever reason, they didn't drive through the Albertsons parking lot to go north on Walupai. So, they come out the side and flip a U-turn here. It's really, it's kind of nasty. If you haven't been out here, I sure wish that you have. It's pretty narrow. So, my first thing is, I would like to see it reset, close this, and actually make the access off Yula. Then, the other thing that I'm concerned about again is lot size. This is layered by the interlocal agreement. It does recommend a ten-thousand-minimal-square-foot lot. These are not, except for just a couple, eleven-plus, 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 eleven-plus. Everything else is under ten. So, maybe give a lot, give two lots in reduction of density, increase the lot size a little bit, reset the street, because I think it'll be safer if traffic is addressed and you reset the street to Yula. I don't like traffic on Yula, because I live out in this area, but I think it'd be a lot wiser, a lot safer, because Deer Springs right here is so intense. So, there you go. Thank you for your time. Otherwise, I approve.
Thank you very much. This is noticed as a public comment. Anybody from the public wish to make comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and have the applicant come back up.
Thank you, Ethan Thompson, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive. A couple of points I'd like to make in response. The first and probably most important is, we understand that we are in the interlocal agreement. The current general plan designation allows for maximum density of three-point-four-nine units, and our proposed density is under that at three-point-one-four units. So, we do believe that we are consistent with the current general plan. And as I mentioned before, if you look at the current layout of the neighborhood, Yula Street really is the demarcation line, and so we really do believe that everything west of Yula would be consistent if this was moved to R-one. And with the commercial uses surrounding and R-one to the north, we believe this is fully consistent and urge your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll turn it over to the planning commissioner, Commissioner Toussaint.
Yeah, I am familiar with this area, and I just went grocery shopping at Albertsons. I had a class out there in Providence, and I think this is compatible. I think this is a good project, and you're going to have my support tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to make a, now, just to go back, Ethan, you are okay with extending for the continuity onto Yula and opening that up, so you have a way in and a way out?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so with that said, I'm making motion for approval on item number fifty-two, T M P seven-six-zero-zero-four, motion to approve with all, excuse me, fifty-three, Z O N seven-five-nine-eight-zero. Motion for approval with all staff recommendations. And that motion passes. Item number fifty-four, V A R seven-five-nine-eight-one, with the added, motion for approval with the added piece of continuity onto Yula. I guess I'd ask staff to word that properly.
Throw your chair off to defer to, would that be better on the tentative map as an added condition or on the variance?
I believe on the map, because we, that'll be where they'll note that additional access point.
I thought it was going on the variance due to the fact they wouldn't then need that variance if they had the continuity.
You would still have the stub street on the opposite end of that street.
Okay. So, I'll just, motion for approval on fifty-four, V A R seven-five-nine-eight-one, with all staff conditions. And that motion passes. Item number fifty-five, V A C seven-five-nine-eight-three, motion for approval. And that motion passes. Item number fifty-six, T M P seven-five-nine-eight-four, with the, motion for approval with the added condition for the continuity.
Mr. Chairman, the condition would read, a revised tentative map will be submitted with northeast substrate connecting through to Yula Street.
Ethan, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, that would be the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on June fifth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
Related items, number fifty-seven and fifty-nine, V A R seven-five-nine-zero-six, applicant owner Gilcrees Natural Sanctuary for possible action on a request for a variance to allow thirty-eight parking spaces where ninety-four are required at eighty-one-oh-three Resell Street. Staff recommends denial. V A R seven-six-zero-one-five, possible action on a request for a variance to allow no half-street improvements where such are required. Staff recommends denial. Item number fifty-nine, S D R seven-five-nine-zero-seven, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review for the proposed thirty-five-hundred-square-foot expansion of an existing commercial recreation amusement outdoor facility, natural sanctuary. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the site is currently developed with thirty-eight parking stalls where fifty-five are required. With the proposed building addition, the site would require nine additional parking spaces, while the applicant proposes to provide zero. The applicant also requests the permanent removal of off-site improvement requirements and to make no improvement contribution. The applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the variance, and staff recommends denial of all applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you, applicant. Please state your name for the record.
Greg Crater, sixteen oh-eight Sandanista Drive. So, we're asking for these variances, our overarching goal is to build about a two-thousand-square-foot aviary building to house additional birds. If you're not familiar with Gilcrees and this particular property, they house birds that people can't continue to take care of, and they offer a service to the community in that way, along with the opportunity for all of us to take ourselves and our kids to their facility and learn about these birds free of charge. It's a nonprofit organization. So, in order to build one more building, one more aviary building to house more birds as the need in our valley continues to increase for that, we're having to deal with a laundry list of other issues, and these three issues are those that we're asking for a variance on, because there's no impact with the building that we're adding to house more birds. We're not going to need additional parking for those birds. We're not going to need additional bathrooms. The curb, and I don't mean to be obtuse, but we don't have the funds to put in curb and gutter all the way around our property right now in order to be able to have the privilege of installing this aviary building. So, that's why we're asking for these variances.
Okay, this is noticed as a public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to be heard on this item? Please come forward. State your name for the record, set the clock to three minutes.
My name is Bonnie Grafton. I'm director of Gilcrees Nature Sanctuary, sixty-two sixty-one Garwood Ave. We provide education. We provide events for the community with children. We also provide a safe haven for just about five-hundred animals at this time that don't have another place to go. We're asking for this not to bring in more animals, but to provide a better quality of care for the ones that we already have. The animals that we're requesting an aviary for currently live in cages, and they would have the ability to have more natural behavior, which would also then give us the ability to educate the public further in keeping of wild birds in captivity. I am also here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to be heard on this item? In case seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and turn it over to commissioners. Any commissioners? Commissioner Toussaint?
Well, I love Gilcrees Farms. I've been taking my grandkids there as long as I can remember, and I can tell you that we had a wayward goose who had been attacked by a dog, and we took it out to Gilcrees, and they rehabbed the goose, and as far as I know, he still lives out there. So, I applaud what you do, and thank you for taking care of our fine-feathered friends.
Any other comments? Seeing none, okay. If the applicant will come back up, please. I personally, I have a lot of history with this property, as far as even when you guys had the devastating fire with the birds, it was me and about fifty volunteers that came out there and cleaned that place up. So, this is near and dear to me. I have no problem personally with the parking issue, because I know right now, at any given time, this to me would remind me of a, you know, like a autozone, that you're not going to have, you know, fifty, sixty cars at one shot. You might have a few coming and going constantly, which it's been like that way for years. Where I have the rub is, I can't idly just stand by and not, and go against the federal guidelines on ADA. That's, that I can't, and I don't think anybody up here would. The second thing I got that's just gives me a little bit of heartburn is, I don't, I'm fine that you do not do the improvements in the street, however, there is a fund, and staff will probably speak better to it, that there's got to be some type of contribution. And I know that, because there's not a developer up here, as you sat through this tonight, you can see developers that ask for the rule standards, although they don't put those infrastructure in, there's a pot that they do have to contribute to for later down the line, because should something, two years from now, five years from now, have to be developed, it's going to stick every one of those neighbors with a sit. And I'm not in the business of sending somebody a bill, you know, five years from now, and then all of a sudden, why am I getting stuck with this for the improvements? So, I think I was told today by staff where your portion on your ask, and I think it was a very fair massage number, it was a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars would be your fifty percent portion for those non-improvements, to put that money into a pot. I thought that maybe, you know, just to just show that we do care, okay, and it's not all about the money all the time, but again, I don't want to put everybody else on the hook, we came up with maybe a happy medium of dropping that down to maybe, you know, twenty-five percent or thirty percent, so it's not such a big task, but, and staff will speak better to this, because it was the idea I brought up to where maybe we could defer that for, you know, two years or something. So, it gives you the ability to get this project on, and then get with your donors and your fundraisers and hold something to where with that bond, then, you know, two years from now, we can relook at that, and they might speak to it a little bit better than me, a little more eloquently, but at the end of the day, I'm trying to not shut your project down, but I also can't just give you a total free pass. There's got to be some skin in the game for the surrounding community. And with that said, you know, if you want to speak to that illusion and kind of give them the ballpark idea and see if they're fine with that.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, yes, I, the code is, the new code that we adopted back in August, what it requires is fifty percent of the improvement contribution for sixty-foot streets and a hundred percent for eighty-foot streets. Today, Resell is master plan is an eighty, so that's where the higher number comes from, the hundred, you know, roughly a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand was counting, you know, a rough estimate of eight-hundred feet at a hundred percent on Resell, and then about three-hundred-and-thirty feet on Al Harrison at fifty percent. I can't guarantee that the rewards are going to change, but if someone was dropped down to a, you know, a sixty in the future, then the number would probably move down to about seventy-five thousand. That would be the improvement contribution required by the code. So, no variance, that's what the code would require, you know, if the street had changed to a sixty. And I looked at, you know, as we were talking, I looked at Resell, and it's built as a sixty on the south side and as an eighty on the north side. So, again, but the master plan today is it's an eighty, and so that's what the requirement is today. As far as, you know, making a condition change, I could throw something out there, and I know we'll probably go on to city council, so it could be, you know, changed as well, but it's really, you know, kind of just a guess, if you will. It's the best massage of the condition I can do, so if you want me to, I can read it in, and we can see how it goes and.
Please do, and we'll see if the applicant agrees, and then at that time, we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, so, in condition nine, I don't believe there's a phasing plan, so I was going to delete the as shown on the approved phasing plan in the first sentence, and then add to condition nine, which is, what condition nine does is it says do all your improvements unless the variance says you don't have to. So, adding to that, adding alternatively, the applicant shall design but not construct off-site improvements for Al Harrison and Resell Street, and post a bond for the improvements not constructed at this time on Al Harrison and Resell Street, or make the appropriate improvement contribution required by the Title nineteen oh-two oh-two-five prior to issuance of permits to the site. So, that kind of gives them flexibility. If we change, then the contribution level does go down. If we change the planned street down to sixty in the future, the contribution level can go down. What it also means is, they come in, they design plans, they post a bond for those design plans, that's cheaper than. That's cheaper than putting up the contribution fee upfront, and then they can, you know, it's not in the condition, but our standard year for, amount of time for calling a bond is two years. So, that gives them two years, and that can always be extended, but it's a, it's a cheaper way of, I think, you know, guaranteeing the improvements by posting, posting a bond for those improvements. And then, condition ten, we would just add with the covenant, we'd say, where it says any off-site improvements are not constructed or bonded for at this time. So, that's, that's a way that we would hold a bond, not require any improvements right now, but we would have the ability to call the bond in two years. But, you know, that's a process to call the bond, so it's not, it's not a guarantee that after a project is not constructed after two years that they posted a bond, that we're going to immediately try to get the bond. It'll be a city process, you know, to call the bond. But that's, and I can submit these, you know, to the city clerks and to planning, but that's kind of just coming up with a way to, you know, have some improvements guaranteed.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, that makes good sense, and that's the type of approach that we would appreciate. We can raise money, but it takes time.
Absolutely.
And we've raised enough money right now to put together this building and pay for the proper permitting and do things quote-unquote "the right way." We don't have a ton of funding beyond that right now, but with a scenario like this where we would have some time to raise that, that would be, that would be huge for us.
Okay.
And just as a clarification on the ADA waiver, we are not asking anybody to waive the ADA. What we were trying to clarify was there are only certain gates that the public uses. And there's, say, for example, there's a dozen gates on the property. There's only two or three that the public uses or has access to. We want to make those ADA accessible. What we didn't want to have to do was the gate on the back property by the pigpen, we don't want to have to go through the cost and time and expense of making that ADA accessible. We feel like that would be unreasonable. But anywhere that the public has access to, we're going to meet the ADA standard.
Okay, and I'll find, and I put that into motion too, and you're cool with that as far as anything that's accessible to the public must be ADA compliant?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Just a quick point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, through you to Lucian. We're only talking about half-street improvements, correct? So, half-street on Resell, is that right, or?
Yes, that's, through you, Mr. Chairman, is correct on both Al Harrison and Resell.
Resell. I had heard one hundred percent at some point, so you meant you'd pay a hundred percent of the eighty percent, which is a half-street improvement on Resell, I think, right?
Oh, sure, yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, let me clarify again. So, it's a hundred percent of the city's bond estimated cost for streets that are eighty feet wider or wider.
Got it. But he's still, he's only responsible for his half-street improvements on each side?
Correct.
Thank you.
And a motion, Commissioner?
Absolutely, I'd be delighted to.
Please do.
I thought being a fan of the birds, you would want to be the one to make the motion, but I will be happy to go to item number fifty-seven, VAR seven-five-nine-zero-six. The motion is for approval. Oh, is that the one with the handicap spots?
No, that one would fall under number fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Fifty-eight would be for the conditions nine and ten, Lucian.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman, the conditions that I read would be for item fifty-nine, and so if those are going to be used, then fifty-eight could probably be either denied or just withdrawn.
And fifty-seven passed.
So, do you want to hear fifty, oh, sorry, Chairman, do you want to hear fifty-nine first or have her vote on fifty-nine first and then possibly withdraw fifty-eight if it's approved?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, related item number fifty-nine, SDR seven-five-nine-zero-seven. Motion is for approval with the condition that all parking, public parking areas be handicapped.
As well as public accessible areas?
Public accessible. I said public parking areas, but public accessible areas, if that's, if that's the way you'd like it, that's fine, yeah. Public accessible areas shall be handicap parked.
And the modifications to nine and ten.
Thank you.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, before we continue, so I just want to verify with Public Works, then with that amended condition, it would be acceptable to strike the variance for no half-street improvements?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, that's correct because these conditions should cover basically their guarantee of doing all the improvements.
So, then we just need a motion to strike item forty, or fifteen, fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight. Item, so the motion is to strike item number fifty-eight, VAR seven-six-zero-one-five.
Now, Mr. Chairman, before that, now, now it's a motion to strike, from, now, if things change, going from here to council, does it need to stay on the agenda?
It's going to council.
Okay.
All right, you heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
All right, related items number sixteen and sixty-one, sixty, VAR seven-five-nine-six-four, applicant Las Vegas Valley Water District, owner Las Vegas Valley Water District, ETAO, for proposed action, a request for a variance to allow deviation from the title of, deviation from the title of nineteen-ten-point-zero-two-zero VC development standards at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Fort Apache. Motion for approval from staff. Item sixty-one, SDR seven-five-nine-six-five, for possible action, a request for a site development plan review for a proposed utility installment, installation, excuse me, pump station. Staff recommends approval. Please state your name for the record.
Jason Gifford, one thousand one South Valley View Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant, the Las Vegas Valley Water District. Sorry.
Staff.
Would you like the staff report, Chair?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed utility installation is a unique development that is located close to and among residential neighborhoods, yet often produces noise and light that is difficult to conceal from outside the property. Thus, the applicant requests to locate structures and equipment at the center of the site rather than oriented to the street frontage. The applicant is also requesting a ten-foot wall rather than an eight-foot wall to provide additional site security. Due to the project's unique circumstances, staff recommends approval of both applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. See, state your name for the record, please.
Jason Gifford, thousand one South Valley View Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant, the Las Vegas Valley Water District. The Las Vegas Valley Water District is in the process of designing site improvements at the fourteen-acre water district property located at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Fort Apache in the northwest part of the valley. The Centennial twenty-six thirty-five zone reservoir consists of a five-million-gallon below-grade reinforced concrete reservoir that will provide gravity storage for the twenty-six thirty-five pressure zone and ultimately transfer storage for pressure zones to the northwest. The Centennial twenty-seven forty-five zone pumping station will consist of a pumping station building sized to pump thirty-eight million gallons per day. An operations building and a disinfection building will be built separate from the pumping station building. The project is on schedule to begin construction in January twenty-twenty and to be completed in March twenty-twenty-one. This reservoir and pumping station will upgrade the reliability of the community's water system in the Centennial Hills area. It'll bolster the infrastructure in the area and minimize the potential for service interruptions for water district customers. The district respectfully requests approval of the site development plan with the addition of a variance to allow for tubular seal fencing along Centennial Parkway, as noted here, the red line with the red blocks, and then also along Fort Apache Road. The north end of the property will be block wall, as well as this section here along the north part of the western border. The remainder of the western border, there is existing block wall there. And then just to give an idea, the rendering here shows what the facility would look like from Centennial looking to the northeast. The variance would allow for the tubular seal fencing. It'll improve security for the site, not obstructing the view of the cameras, as well as add to the aesthetic, aesthetic view of the site. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners. Seeing no comments from the commissioners, I will make a motion to approve VAR seven-five-nine-six-four. And that motion passes. Motion to approve item number sixty-one, SDR seven-five-nine-six-five. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you.
Item number sixty-two, VAR seven-five-nine-five-seven, applicant owner, Las Vegas Clark County Library District, for possible action, a request for a variance to allow a proposed sixteen-foot-tall freestanding sign where twelve feet is the maximum allowed, and a proposed animated sign with two-hundred feet of property zone for residential use where such is prohibited. At twenty-eight fifty-one East Bonanza Road, staff recommends denial. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has not adequately demonstrated that the proposed sign would not be placed or designed in a manner such that light from the sign would not be visible from the adjacent multifamily residential developments. Furthermore, there is nothing extraordinary about the property that warrants use of an animated display when a non-animated display would meet Title nineteen nineteen requirements. Staff therefore recommends denial of the requested variance, subject to two conditions if approved, which includes standard Title nineteen restrictions on animated on-premise signs such as brightness, transition time between messages, and duration of message display. Please note that additional letters of protest were received after the publication of this item. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. State your name for the record.
Good evening, Sean Coulter, one fifty-one East Warm Springs, Las Vegas. I'm here representing the applicant, the Las Vegas Valley, or Clark County School, or, sorry, Las Vegas, Clark County Library District. So, I wanted to point out that the sign on this graph here is located right up against Bonanza. So, the property is just on the south side of Bonanza. We have Twenty-eighth Street to the west, Wardell to the east, and then Walnut to the south. So, one of the things that, there are two items here that are at play. One is the height restriction, and then also the animated LED signs. So, the, from, if I read the staff's recommendations, it sounds like the height isn't as much of an issue as it is the LED animated sign. So, one of the rationales for the LED sign is that with this new library coming in, which is actually opening Thursday, so I recommend everybody go see it, it's really a great library, is that they have several programs, and when I say several, over fifty programs that they're offering on a regular basis. And so, one of, the reason they're locating the library where it's at is because this neighborhood really needs that support. And so, with that comes these programs that will help, help the residents in the community. So, the LED animated sign would be there for showing all these different programs and activities because they want to make sure that the community sees those. Because one of, one of the challenges is that in this neighborhood, a lot of people don't have internet access, so they would actually, one of the few ways that they would actually understand and see what type of programs there are in the library would be through this signage. Now, one of the things that the library district is, would definitely entertain is dimming the signage at night to make sure that it is not as obtrusive. And, and also, the, I think, too, the, some of the, the location of the sign is a little difficult just because of all the residential around the property. So, we tried to locate it in a position that is the least impactful, I think, to the, to the neighborhood while still being on Bonanza, since Bonanza is a major thoroughfare with a lot of traffic on it. So, we would just ask that you consider allowing the district to have the LED sign, the animated sign there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Would anybody from the public wish to be heard? Thank you. Just come down and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening to the Planning Commission. My name is Smiljana Savicic, and I can spell that if I need to. Address one-five-one East Warm Springs, eight-nine-one-one-nine. I am one of the designers of this sign, and so I've been working with the library district also. I would urge you to consider approving this signage because I think it's important to understand what the intent is behind it. We are definitely sensitive to minimizing light pollution into neighboring residential areas, but at the same time, the reason that we propose this is because the library district, what their intent here is, is to expand the library services, and this is something that is going to be rolled out in the coming years. One of the easiest ways in an area like this one to kind of communicate that is through this signage, and our intent is not just to display random marketing material, but as Sean stated earlier, between fifty and a hundred programs that generally were not included in, you know, library, excuse me, facilities are going to be included, and the easiest way to communicate those messages to people that might have limited availability to resources is through direct messaging through this sign in front of the library. We also did consider placing the sign at alternate locations on the site, but because, you know, Bonanza is such a large thoroughfare, there really wasn't any good reason to place the signage anywhere else because it would be counterintuitive, and there's no reason because the, you know, visibility would, would be limited. It's also important to stress that the library district really would consider dimming that signage as much as is necessary during the nighttime hours because that is outside library facility times, and the marketing messaging would not be as needed at, say, like, ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night and during very early hours of the morning. So, the majority of this marketing material would be displayed during the daylight, and it's really not going to compete with the sun that we have here in Vegas. So, all of these things are things that we are able to kind of mitigate per your recommendations, but because of all of that, we, we really urge you to consider approving this because we, we believe that this library will be a very important staple for that, that particular community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and turn it over to the commission. Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, I read through this, and I appreciate everybody getting up and giving their comments. It doesn't seem like the staff has a huge issue with the height of the sign. In reading their report, it was more along the lines of the LED reader boards, and I think you have, you know, discussed that here briefly. What do you plan on doing to minimize the light pollution into the neighboring properties? And I know you stated shutting, turning it down at night, but you didn't talk about what hours or, you know, by what percentage or anything like that?
So, I'm not exactly sure what percentage, but we can adjust that to whatever it needs to be after sunset and before sunrise. And if needed, and that would be during normal library hours, which, you know, in the wintertime, obviously, you know, it'll go to nine o'clock at night, I believe, is when it's going to be open till. But the, so that, we could definitely dim the signage. Now, what, the way it is right now is it's perpendicular to the street, so you can see it coming from both directions on Bonanza. And so, the, the hope is that it's not as obtrusive to the, to the apartments directly across the street. The ones to the east and west, yes, it's facing those. However, the ones to the east are a hundred and ninety-eight feet, so we're pretty close to the two hundred there. But one of the, one of the things, too, that the library district is willing to entertain and work with the Planning Commission is we could turn the sign off, too, you know, at night if needed. But it is really important to the district that, that they advertise these programs because the community just really needs those programs, and they want to get that information out there. there.
Okay. I don't know if turning it off is a solution. I mean, if you're open to, I don't want to put too many restrictions on it. I mean, maybe a static sign at night, just saying Las Vegas library, but the sign, I think, already says that. So I think, as of right now, I feel comfortable with this. I think this sign's a beautiful sign, and if this, you know, if there is light pollution or anything of the, anything along those lines, then we could always pull this back to Planning Commission, take a look at it, or just reach out to the library, and hopefully they'll work with us on that. So seeing that, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion. Item number sixty, V A R seven-five-nine-six-four, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You heard the motion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, V A R seven-five-nine-five-seven, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office in ten days.
Okay, thank you. Item number sixty-three, S U P seven-five-nine-four-nine, applicant, Thai Healing Solutions Spa owner, Deer Springs Village LLC, for possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed fourteen-thirty-two-square-foot massage establishment with use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential zone property where four-hundred feet is required. At sixty-seven-twenty North Huallapai Way, Suite one-eighty, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is a developing shopping center designed to accommodate a variety of land uses, including the proposed massage establishment use. The proposed use is separated from the adjacent residentially-zoned property by a block wall that does not allow direct access. Staff finds the proposed use to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and is recommending approval with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Mark Haag, H A A G. I live at eighty-four forty-five Sky Crossing Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-six-six.
Okay, would you like to present?
Yes. We're neophytes at this business, and so it's kind of an interesting process for us, and I appreciate what the staff has done to get us here. We want to open, my wife has been a massage therapist for ten years, and she's ready to take the next step and start her own business, and it's going to be a very small footprint in a, in a, in a developing area. There are no other establishments, spa massage establishments there, and it's massage therapy. She works with referrals from doctors and from chiropractors. It's a really good business for a neighborhood to have, I think.
Thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner, to your side.
Yeah, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem with this. I think staff got it right, and they recommended approval, and I can also recommend approval. So if there are no other comments, I'll make a motion.
Please do.
S U P seven-five-nine-four-nine, approval.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Item number sixty-four, S D R seven-five-nine-seven-zero, applicant owner, Torah Learning Center, for the possible action or request for a site development plan review for a proposed two-story, five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot classroom building addition to an existing house of worship at ninety-five ninety West Sahara. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed building addition contributes to an attractive, integrated environment consistent with the intent of the commercial development and the adjacent neighborhoods. Staff finds the proposed development meets the requirements of Title nineteen and recommends approval of the site development plan review. Please note that additional letters of protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioner James Grindstaff, ninety-four forty West Sahara Avenue, representing the Torah Learning Academy. Based on the late hour, I would just like to say thank you, staff, for the wonderful approval, recommendation for approval, and I would just ask that the commission follow suit. If they have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
This is noted as a public hearing. Is anybody from the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner, Commissioner Roush.
Thank you, Chairman. I have no problem with this application, and I think it's a lovely use. I think the building is lovely. I think it's compatible and harmonious with the existing development in the area, and I love that you're putting in a facility so close to the library and into the community where it belongs. So that said, I'd like to make a motion for approval if nobody else has any other comments.
Please do.
My motion is for approval on item number sixty-four, S D R seven-five-nine-seven-zero.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you. And now I'll go home and try to figure out how the Knights gave up four goals in four minutes.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office in ten days.
Okay, the director's business. Item number sixty-five, T X T seven-six-one-one-five, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for proposed action on a request to amend L V M C Title nineteen-point-one-two permissible use to add minimum space, minimum special use permit requirement to a multifamily residential use and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, in two thousand twelve, Title nineteen was amended to allow multifamily residential units conditionally as part of a mixed-use development in commercial zoning districts where previously the use had been allowed only in certain residential zoning districts. But by allowing the use conditionally, it opened the door to allowing multifamily development as a standalone use in commercial districts via approval of a special use permit. This amendment would close that loophole and restrict multifamily development in commercial zoning districts as part of a mixed-use development only. Staff recommends approval. Thank you.
This is part of the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close it. Commissioner?
Yes, Vice Chair, I went through this with city staff, and I do understand it. I did read the fund, and I did have to read the funds like ten times, because it was a mouthful, but anyways, Eric did explain this to me, and I appreciate that. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Please do.
Director's business. I'm sorry, retired now, sorry. Let's get back to the motion, please.
Director's business, sixty-five, T S T seven-six-one-one-five, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions or amendments.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, that will move forward to City Council in ordinance form. Everybody enjoy yet another overtime.
Item number sixty-six, the citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to the matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless the subject on this agenda has a schedule for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of time and discretion the subject, as well as the amount of time single speakers allowed, may be limited. This is public comment. Seeing none, I close public comment. And adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. You did a great job on that agenda.